Please rise for the pledge of the flag and the invocation.
Please leave this room to the right of the United States of America, and we are a republic, a one nation under God, and with the full liberty of justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for our freedom and democracy. We thank you for our customs and our heritage. We thank you for our rights and the ability to express ourselves individually. Enlighten us with your guidance so we may follow a positive path. Amen.
Jimmy Myers is here to fix his chair.
Court call a roll. Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Sahasky?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Sherman?
Here.
Alderman Thompson?
Here.
Alderman Woodburn?
Here.
Attorney Hawthorne?
Here.
I present your address. Thank you. Item one.
Result that minutes of the common council meeting of February 6, 2001 are hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Result that city clerk's annual report for fiscal year 2000 in the amount of $72,454.20 is hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
Motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item carried. Next item.
Result that city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, March 20 in the council chambers of the municipal building relative to a proposed local law which would authorize the expansion of the Fulton Empire Zone to include portions of the town of Granby and town of Voundee and the designation of a zoning board member from the town of Granby.
Mayor, roughly where is the expansion going?
The expansion, this is, the Empire Zone is what is replacing the old EDZ Zone. And there are areas out on Route 3 in Granby that will be added. There's also areas at the industrial park, at the airport.
Okay.
And I believe...
Interface Solutions.
Interface Solutions. Well, the other one was, um, yeah. Help me.
The airport, but also the bottling plant.
Wasn't that going on there?
We're trying to get a legalized, very, uh, uh, like, uh...
Okay, that's one of the things that was being looked at.
Alright, okay, thanks.
That's what it is. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Result that the mayor be authorized to sign the supplemental agreement between the City of Fulton and the New York State Department of Transportation for the reverse betterment project Route 3 and Route 481.
Mr. Cook, would you let the council know what this is about?
We have a supplemental agreement before you with Blaslon Balk and Lee. In the process of the 481 planning, we asked BB&L to do a lot of different alternatives for us, a number of options for us to look at, and in doing that, it exceeded the cost of the original supplemental agreement. So we reviewed it and sent it to the state, and they reviewed it, and they are prepared to pay it, and that's what's before you right now.
Are there any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Result that the annual maintenance agreement for fiscal year 2001 with all tell on the amount of $1,227 hereby approved.
That is the maintenance agreement on the whole system within this building?
Yes.
Okay. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Result that the reappointment of Alan Mosier, 771 South 1st Street, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Planning Commission effective February 15, 2001 into expire February 14, 2004 is hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Result that the reappointment of Robert Jennings, 46 West 4th Street, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Planning Commission effective February 15, 2001 into expire February 14, 2004 is hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Result that Chapter 165, subsection 165-61, Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance of the City of Fulton entitled Parking Prohibited at Certain Hours Be Amendmented to Read as follows: Delete Park and Shop Plaza 1:30 a.m. to 6 a.m., all hours from November 1st to April 1st, and Canal Parking Lot 1:30 a.m. to 6 a.m., all hours from November 1st to April 1st.
In the explanation, this is being deleted because is it already addressed in Section 16535 by virtue of the schedule in 16532? So this was a duplication within the charter. That's why it is being deleted. Do I hear a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Result that the mayor be authorized to sign the 2001 funding contract between the City of Fulton and operation of Swiggo County in the amount of $10,000. Said cost is a budgeted item and to be a direct charge to the A6989 account.
Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carried. Next item.
I think we're okay to authorize it. We're not ready, quite ready at all.
Well, we can authorize it then. Okay.
Do we have the money to do that project this year? The pier?
That is the grant, the Parks and Recreation Grant.
So we're all set then?
Yes.
Result that city clerk be authorized, directed to advertise, receive sealed bids in his office in municipal building on or before March 19, 2001 up to 2:00 p.m. and to be publicly open at 2:15 p.m. that same day in the council chambers for the construction of a pier at Bullhead Point in accordance with specifications prepared by the Fulton Engineering Department.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Wouldn't be the first time, would it?
That would be big.
Next item.
Result that the mayor be authorized to sign a three-year contract with Upstate Administrative Services for the administration of health care benefits.
Do I hear a motion?
Move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
President City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of February 20, 2001 regarding a proposed local law which would amend Section C152K of the Fulton City Charter entitled Demolition. Mayor Stafford will declare this public hearing open.
At this time, I would ask that the city attorney just brief us on what this change entails.
Thank you, Your Honor. This request came from the codes chief. Chief Korea indicated that there were some demolition permits being requested, and he had noticed that it didn't appear that there was any, anything in our city statutes that allowed a duration to be put on how long the demolition permit could be issued for. In other words, could somebody get a permit and not demolish a building in a year, two years, or whatever? What we essentially did this language mirrors what's now done on a building permit, maximum of one year, and the codes chief has the option, depending on the situation, to make that even less when the permit is issued. And the second requested change is that the bureau chief would have the discretion to require a performance bond, and that would be if there's a big project that would entail a lot of, a lot of traffic issues and things like that, that we certainly would want to be able to control that a little better, and if somebody walked away from the middle of a demolition, we would want a performance bond so that we could invoke that bond and go ahead and finish the project. So those are the changes that are requested.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak on this issue? Is there anyone on the council that has any questions or would care to speak on this?
Your Honor, just to make sure we got a bond when they do something like this.
A bond and a time limit to complete the demolition.
One year.
No more than one year. It can be even less, depending on the circumstances.
Okay.
If there is no other input, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll offer that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried.
Whereas the mayor, members of the council, and all in attendance have been given an opportunity to give their written or oral comments regarding said proposed local law, therefore be resolved, proposed local law amending Section C152K, the Fulton City Charter is hereby approved.
Is there a motion?
I'll offer.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
President City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this common council meeting of February 20, 2001 relative to a proposed zone change request for the property located on the southwest corner of Oneida and South 7th Street for change of zone from C1 Commercial to C2 Commercial for the purpose of constructing a Wilson Farms at said location. Mayor Stafford will declare this public hearing open.
I realize that there are a number of people here tonight that would, are going to want to speak on this issue, so I'm going to have to ask that those speaking please limit their comments to, from three to five minutes, and when you make the comments, please come to the microphone and state your name and your address, please. Now, before this is open, would the people from representing the developer care to put on a presentation to let people know just what is proposed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Devin Delpas. I'm with the Laker Development Group, and if you'll permit me, I'll pass these out to the board. What we're proposing to do is rezone an area of the city that's currently zoned C1 Commercial to C2 Commercial. The area that we're seeking this rezoning consists of about four lots formerly the home of Fulton Builders Supply. The reason for the request is for the demolition of five buildings with about 15,000 square foot of buildings, both masonry and wood structures. Demolish those 15,000 square feet of building and construct a 2,835 square foot neighborhood grocery store with four gasoline pumps. The current C1 zoning permits us to construct that building, the neighborhood grocery store as it is. However, to make this project feasible, our tenant requires gasoline sales, and thus we're asking for the rezoning. The total investment of this project to the city, or in the city of Fulton, is close to $1 million with the gasoline equipment as well. The property would be developed by us, which is Laker Development Group, and leased to Wilson Farms for a period of 20 years and guaranteed by their parent company, Royal Ahold. Basically, what that amounts to is a 20-year commitment. They also have options to bring them out to, I believe it's 49 years total. Commitment on the part of Royal Ahold in addition to the TAPS that they already own in town and the other Wilson Farms that they already own in town on the other side of the river for another period of at least 20 years. I think most of you will agree that those two stores that currently exist in the city are good neighbors, well-maintained, good employers, good contributors to the tax base and the economy as a whole, and because of that relationship on the part of Wilson Farms and Royal Ahold, they would like to continue to do that, and they see the City of Fulton as an area that could use an additional store. They've done demographic research and determined that for what they do, their concept of a neighborhood grocery store, this is an excellent site for that use and would like to locate it there. Just as another point, this property has been on the market for over two and a half years. It's deteriorating on a daily basis, especially not being occupied. It's dark. It's inviting to less desirable activities at nighttime, and this project will obviously change that significantly by tearing down those buildings and creating a site that you see there. The first picture that you see is, the green area is that green. It does go a little bit on the neighboring properties to the south there for the illustration purposes, primarily because I'm not very good at using this particular program, so you'll have to excuse me on that, but you can see the property lines that are around the property there. There's a significant amount of green area, area that will be landscaped. You can also see the paved areas, plenty of circulation, plenty of parking, there's about 14 parking spaces, including a handicap space. There are only two curb cuts to this site. One is on 7th, the other's on Oneida Street. Currently, there is no real curb cut. The whole thing is one big curb cut going around the property. So what we're doing is controlling that curb cut, creating a much safer situation than what currently exists, increasing sightlines significantly. If you recall, and I think it's either the second or third page of that package that you have in front of you, that you can see a bunch of black building-like things on the property. Those, that's it right there. SPO3, thank you. That shows you the existing buildings. As you can see, they go right out to the corner pretty much, and it cuts down sight distances. So with this change, you're going to be able to see significantly around that corner and enhance the safety of that intersection substantially. Are there any questions for me with respect to general site plan questions? What I'm going to do is introduce you to Ian Williams, representative of Wilson Farms, who can talk to you a little bit about hours of operation, safety, employees, that type of thing, life safety, especially with respect to the fuel systems. There is a significant change in the federal guidelines these days with respect to fuel systems, how they're installed, how they're maintained, how they're monitored with respect to those facilities that may have been in existence a lot longer. You have some of those facilities in town. They had to bring their equipment up to newer specifications. However, any contamination they may have made prior to that, they should have made some changes to. The new standards basically prohibits or controls any kind of safety concerns with respect to any kind of leakage and that kind of stuff, but Ian will go through that a little bit more significantly. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question. It doesn't appear to be in the plan to put a sidewalk along South 7th Street, which would be on the east side of the project.
I think that could be, it's probably an oversight on the part of the architect, and that certainly would be done.
Alright, and I have had some neighbors to that property that reside on Keuga Street. Right now, they have considerable privacy in their backyard due to the buildings that are there, and they are concerned about the loss of privacy if the buildings are torn down. Do the plans include some sort of privacy fencing on the south and west side of the properties?
To my recollection on the site plans, it does not show that, but if that is the pleasure of the board, then certainly we'll do so. In doing so, or in asking that of the developer, I would also ask that you tell us how high you would like it, whether it's six feet, eight feet, because different towns have different standards on height. You're allowed to put up a six foot, but you need a variance for eight, that type of thing, so...
That would be looked into, but I would also think that if this project was to take place, that there would definitely need to be some sort of perimeter fencing on the west and south side of the project just to prevent people trespassing through yards to get there.
Certainly.
And a privacy fence would definitely be required of some sort.
Okay. I honestly, I apologize for not reviewing that issue before coming to the board this evening to determine whether or not it was actually included in those drawings. It may be on there, but we will make sure that it does go on there. So just so I make sure that I've got those two things, there would be a sidewalk along 7th as well as fencing to the south and west.
Any new structure would go before the planning commission for site plan review anyways?
Yes, sir.
And I know that they would be very strict as far as what they would expect of the property, so that's just another step in the process. I know that you've noticed on here, because I remember the last, well, there were 16 different landscaping that you were going to do, so I would assume that in the mayor's questioning whether there would also be a fence up there, I would think that that would certainly be part of it.
Yes, sir.
And the more green, the better.
Yes, right now, there's virtually no green on the site. I think you can see that from that SP3. You know, you've got buildings, you've got gravel parking areas, but any green area is really, you know, weeds and scrub that have kind of popped up around. Any other questions from the site?
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It kind of doesn't really pertain to this right here, but it's to what you were saying about TAPS and Wilson Farms being a good to the community, the whole nine yards. I was wondering if Wilson Farms or your parent company has any long-range plans to implement maybe another Wilson Farm someplace else?
I'm sorry, I'm here again. Another Wilson Farm, mayor?
Somewhere else in the city. It's a vague question. I'm just curious if Wilson Farms or TAPS has a long-range plan of maybe sticking another Wilson Farm somewhere else in the city?
At the moment, we do not. Do you want me to identify myself first?
Right.
Ian Williams, I'm the director of real estate for Wilson Farms, for the Wilson Farms division, part of TAPS Markets.
It was just a general question I wanted to ask.
We have looked at several sites within the city of Fulton. We've looked at a couple of others in addition to this one. We have yet to find one that we think we could serve the needs of the community and have the customer base we would need to make it work, but we are still looking.
So, I mean, you'd be looking outside the old lumber mill down at Oneida Street for another place, though, too. I mean, like, for maybe a third Wilson Farm? Because that's what I'm getting at.
Let me answer this, answer it a little differently. We are not looking for an alternate site to this site.
I understand that.
Okay. However, we are looking for additional sites within the city limits.
Right.
To service the community where we've proposed to build this store, we do not have any alternate sites in mind.
Right. No, I, that's, you answered my question, that's what I wanted to ask, and you answered it.
So I do understand it is, you got this site, you're still looking for other sites as well?
That's correct.
Okay. Within...
We haven't found any we can make work yet, but we are desiring to be in your city.
Well, you probably do the same type of market study that you did with this.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Are there any other questions?
If there aren't any more questions for Devin, I'll continue. And partly in response to your comment, we do have a research department that does come out and research different sites and identify areas where we think that we can be of service to the community and run a profitable business, and our research department came out and identified this location as one that we would like to make a 20-year commitment to.
What would be the criteria for making a commitment to a site?
There are a lot of different criteria, but a big portion of it would be traffic count, would be population within half a mile, population within a one-mile radius. Typically, a Wilson Farm doesn't pull beyond a one-mile radius. In fact, for this particular location, I think our numbers were based more on the half-mile And then they look at competition and whether or not they think competition is serving the needs of the niche that we service, as we're a neighborhood food store, we're not a convenience store, we're not a grocery store, we're somewhere in between.
They also look at the walk-in business in the neighborhood.
Yes, yes. Traffic counts being both pedestrian traffic and as well vehicular traffic.
So basically, what you just said is you look at competition in an area, and then you kind of go in and compete?
No, we look at an area...
Right.
...to see what kind of population is there.
Right.
To see what kind of customer base...
Right.
...we could have. And then, in addition to that, we look at what competition is there.
That's what I mean.
But if I heard you correctly, the way you suggested is we look at competition first and then see who we could steal from.
No.
We look at what the total business is in the area and then see if the current competition serves that need, and if it doesn't serve the need, we would like to go in and help serve that need. And we think there's an opportunity to serve a need that is not being serviced in that neighborhood today. As part of our development, gasoline has become critical for us from a profitability The gasoline to us is just another part of the business, another income generating part of the business, another rack of candy, so to speak. We do not have a predatory position with gasoline. We do not come in trying to destroy the gasoline market, put such a price that's so low that the whole market falls down. We come in specifically just for the additional income of gasoline. It also, we have found, has been an added service to our customers. They have a one-stop shop for some fill-in groceries, some convenience items. We're very strong in coffee, and gasoline is just another one of the services now that we provide.
We all understand that the only reason that we're here tonight is due to the gasoline. If it wasn't for the gasoline pumps, probably we would already have the store built.
Yes.
Okay.
And if I may add to that comment, we actually looked at, based on the comments from the presentation last time we were in front of this board, we actually looked at whether or not, if the bank were willing to forgive the loan on the property and if the property were thus free, could we afford to develop on this property with our store only without gasoline, thinking that might actually be a possibility if we pursued it. We were unable to make it work. Now, in saying that, we actually have an opportunity a year or a year and a half from now, possibly. I don't yet have it in my arsenal of stores to build, but we are acquiring the Grand Union stores up in the Adirondacks. The Grand Union stores are 10,000 to 15,000 to 25,000 square feet and bigger. They have meat programs, a butcher, and we have yet as a company to be able to service the needs of the customers with a 10,000 to 30,000 square foot stores. We do well on 30,000 to 35,000 and bigger. We do well on the 3,000 square foot Wilson Farms. We have not been able to find a way to make that store in-between work. A year from now, we may very well come back to the city if we don't have the approval tonight for gasoline or don't get approval for gasoline and say, we've acquired the Grand Unions, we understand how to operate them, we would like to propose a 10,000 square foot store with a butcher on the site, and I think we would be within our zone rights. So we have that possibility in the future. I prefer not to hang my hat on that because I don't know that we'll be able to run it profitably. I don't know that we'll be able to make it work on this site. I do know today that we have a site plan and a business that we know how to run, that we know we can do profitably, and I think serves the needs of the customers in that area better than possibly another store... area better than possibly another store with another butcher, as you know, there is a competitor around the corner that does have meat.
Yes.
And I prefer to service the needs that he's not servicing, rather than compete head-to-head with him with a butcher, et cetera, as I just explained, could come up a year from now. The hours of operation for our store are typically 6:00 AM to midnight. If the board has issue with those hours, we certainly can address those and respond to those. We do have some stores that open earlier at 5:00 AM, because there happens to be the traffic there to support the operating hours, but again, if there's an issue with the hours, I'd be happy to address them. I do have, I do have a fuel presentation that is on my laptop, and I apologize, I was unable to get printed copies. It shows some of the safety features of gasoline. I could talk through them, I could show them to you if you need a visual, but if I may, I'll start, and if the board would like me to come in front of each member, I'll be happy to show you what the pictures are that help illustrate what it is I'm referring to. I assume that this is not visible. Let me just talk through it, and if there's any questions, if you'd like further clarification on what's on the photo, I'd be happy to show the board. We will have as part of DEC, most of these, we do some things over and above, but most of these are DEC requirements, and if you put gasoline, you have to have this. We are stage-two vapor recovery, which means, stage-one, by the way, is at the car, but stage-two is where the vapors really become an issue for the surrounding area. Stage-two is when the tanker delivers fuel into the tank. Vapors go through a vapor port, which are then collected by hose and put back into the truck. So, stage-two vapor recovery is designed specifically to capture vapors. The fuel port, where you connect from the truck to the tank, has a little window, and on that window, you can actually see the product going through the nozzle into the tank, so you know it's moving product. Tanks by law have to be stopped at 90% of tank capacity. That is designed specifically so you cannot have an overflow. If there ever, and the policy is, and the law is, you have to stick to tanks before to make sure there's enough room, check the tank capacity, make sure that what you're putting from the truck into the tank can fit. If ever there's a mistake, of course, there could be human error involved, or if ever there is a mistake and there is an overflow concern, there's a mechanism in the pipe into the tank where a baffle comes up and shuts off the flow of product at 90% of the tank capacity. The driver then shuts off the fuel at the tanker. He has then a hose that can hold as much as 30 gallons. The valve that shuts off the product will allow a very slow, continuous drip of product until that 30 gallons goes in. It could take him another five minutes or so for that product to go in the tank, but there are no overflow concerns. In addition, when he pulls that nozzle off, if there's any spillage, it goes into a containment box, again, by law, and that containment box has a little plug he just put right into the tank. The tanks, when they're installed, I think, actually, I have a photograph. We're able to get two photographs printed, I apologize if I don't have copies. The tanks are put in a concrete slab with tie-downs. I don't think there's a high-water table here, I don't think that's an issue, but if ever there was, the tanks are tied down, they cannot pop up out of the ground. The tanks are double-wall fiberglass, the lines from the tanks are triple-wall fiberglass. They have brine inside, there's interstitial space inside the tank. If there's ever a leak, there are monitoring systems that work 24 hours a day. We have a third-party monitor those. If ever there's a problem, it's not just people on our site having to see it, we have a monitoring system that picks up on that. Inside or above the tank is a submersible pump, that is where the mechanism is to transfer the product from the tank to the dispensers and to the lines. That is also in a fully-contained box, so if ever that leaked, that goes into the containment box. Again, you would have alarms going off saying that there's a leak. Above the dispensers is a fire suppression. By law, local fire marshal will work out how many nozzles he wants to spray, et cetera, et cetera. Every fire marshal could be different on their requirements, but you have fire suppression, and that's automatic. It goes off by heat sensors. Underneath the dispenser is also a fully-contained box, so if ever there's a leak inside the dispenser, you see product underneath in that fully-contained box. Nothing in the system goes directly to the ground. As I said, again, triple-wall fiberglass lines, double-wall tank.
Is this the same technology that was used at the other Wilson Farms store for the gas?
Some of it may not have been. At a minimum, yes. I believe the triple-wall fiberglass lines are an added improvement. DEC requires double, we're now putting in triple anyway, but everything else, I think, pretty much is there. And of course, there's an automatic shut-off switch inside the store. If ever there were a problem, there's a drive-off, there's catastrophic accident, there is a shut-off switch that if ever there were a problem, the cashier can shut the products off, or shut the pumps down. And I do have one other photograph that I can hand out, and it deals with security. We do have cameras on our canopy columns to monitor what's happening there. People are in the back looking at the camera, they use it in case there's a problem. As I said, you have cashiers who are up front, they're actually monitoring it in person, but if ever there were an issue, we have cameras as well. And that, of course, is a deterrent to any kind of mischief, thievery, hanging out, that kind of stuff. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? Oh, yes, we have typically about 20 employees between full-time and part-time. The lighting for the location, we now have in our canopy lighting recessed lights, so there is no spill over. The light is actually above the deck of the canopy, so it shines well underneath, but does not spill over beyond the canopy area. What we design is what we think a well-lit location. We don't certainly want to light up the whole street corner, but we want to have enough lighting where it's safe, where our customers feel safe, and it deters people hanging out. Now that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions on the council?
I'm going to have Dennis Hawthorne Jr. just talk to you a bit about a couple of other points that I'd like to make.
Good evening, gentlemen. I haven't got much new, if anything, new to say that wasn't mentioned last time when we were here in the fall. As you know, we need to make complete records, so I'd just remind you of a couple of those points. Again, for background, I've been representing the Collinses, Collinses in connection with their attempts to sell this site for some time, and it's through them, and after we became a contract to sell it to the Wilson Farms representatives, that I started helping out, the Wilson Farms people, and coordinating attendance at these hearings. I can tell you from working with the Collinses all this time that they've received no other significant, meaningful offers for the sale or purchase of this property. They are very much financially distressed, as you know, just from seeing the fact that the lumberyard is no longer operating. They owe a significant mortgage to a local lending institution, which so far has withheld taking any action to try to enforce that mortgage, and I think I pointed out to you last fall, I found that a lot hot at one point, so I contacted the lender and said, well, thank you very much for being so patient and not foreclosing, and I was told they have no intention of foreclosing. The potential liabilities that would come with the lender having to take over control and potential resale or demolition of the site is more than that lender will accommodate. So again, as I just mentioned to you in passing last time, and again, I don't want you to take this as any kind of threat, I don't mean it that way, I'm just setting out the reality, because the bank representative is not able to be here tonight, asked me to relay this to you, that the bank's not going to seek it back or force a sale of it on foreclosure. And again, I'll leave it to you to think about what that would mean if this property, if the taxes continue to not be paid at that time. Are there any questions for me as representatives of, as a representative of the Collins family this morning? If there aren't, I would, there were two other individuals who could not be present tonight, wanted to place their input onto the record of this hearing, and if I may, I'll read their statements into the record and then ask that the paper statements themselves have made a part of the record. One of them, you've heard, the same statement, that's Russ Johnson, who is a county legislator who owns premises and continues to own premises directly across Anita Street from the site. I believe the premises address is 619 Anita Street. Is currently renting that property out, because he and his wife and growing family moved into a larger home last fall on Burley Terrace. I'll read this into the record. Again, forgive me, I believe you've already heard it, but I believe we need to make a complete record. Letter, it was dated October 3rd in connection with that meeting. Dear gentlemen, please accept this correspondence in my absence and kindly make it part of the record, since I am unable to attend this important hearing due to a previously scheduled work conflict. This evening, you will listen to members of the public as they speak both for and against the proposed zone change from C1 Commercial to C2 Commercial of the Fulton Builder Supply commercial property. As the county legislator whose district adjoins this property, I am compelled to convey to you that I am unequivocally in support of this zone change, as it will clearly serve the bigger good of our great city, that our great city so desperately deserves. The existing Fulton Builder Supply property is a deteriorating, empty building that is a significant risk of danger to the neighborhood, that is a hazardous object of attraction that could potentially draw in curious children looking for another place to play, and is a concerning target for criminal mischief, including arson. As you are aware, the present C1 Commercial zone does not preclude Wilson Farms from building a convenience store at the site right now. In fact, C1 Commercial would permit many types of businesses to locate at the property without any public input, such as other retail stores, or even a bar, tavern, or local neighborhood pub. In actuality, this very public hearing this evening boils down to one, or to merely one issue, do we or do we not want gas pumps? If having gas pumps is a neighborhood safety concern, bear in mind that stringent DEC and EPA mandates and regulations over the years have been both dependable and trustworthy in assuring health and safety for us all. We must continue to rely on our local, state, and federal governments to that regard. Wilson Farms has established a history of being a responsible business and a good member of our community. Although I empathize with those who are not in favor of this proposed zone change, I view this offer as a positive direction for our city. Fulton will generate much-needed sales tax revenue and realize additional economic growth. Wilson Farms will help in the fight to keep property taxes stabilized, and the property will become much safer for the community, plus it will be much more aesthetically pleasing than the current buildings are. Additionally, Wilson Farms will offer yet another beneficial service to the neighborhood. As you all know, I also bring a personal perspective to the table, having been a resident who, up to last month, lived with my family practically within arms' reach from the property for nearly my entire life. I've seen Fulton Builders apply at its peak with incessant vehicular and pedestrian traffic flowing in and out of the business with rapid frequency. I cannot recall a single incident when such a heavy flow of traffic had caused a major inconvenience to the neighborhood. I do not suspect that this would happen with Wilson Farms convenience store and gas pumps at the site in the future. Gentlemen, as you decide on the future of the Fulton Builders Supply property, I am confident that in the end, you will collectively make the right decision that will clearly be for the bigger good of the entire city. I wish you all well and express a heartfelt thank you for taking the time to listen, and more importantly, for all that you do for the future of this great city of Fulton. Signed, Russ W. Johnson. Also, I'd offer into the record a statement dated today's date from Gay Musumichi, who owns the property on the northwest corner of Anita and Seventh Street, that's 623 Anita Street. I spoke to her this morning, she, you may recall, was present the last time around, asked a couple of questions. She is ill and unable to attend tonight, she's got this bug that's going around, so she faxed us through and asked if I'd make it part of the record. She states as follows. Dear Mayor Stafford and common counsel, I am unable to attend the public hearing tonight, and am sending my support to zone change the property located on the southwest corner of Anita and South Seventh Street from C1 to C2 Commercial. My family's lived on the corner of Anita and North Seventh since the mid-'40s. There's been a building across from our home my whole, I'm sorry, there's been a business across from our home my whole life. The closing of Fulton Builders a few years ago was a great loss to this community, and this time of economic ups and downs, can we really afford not to bring in new businesses? I feel confident that Wilson Farms would be a good business for this community, and that they would follow appropriate guidelines to assure the safety of the neighborhood. So I would submit these for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. This should probably be read aloud and made part of the record, too. I guess I have Joe Scott. Yeah, you have a bunch of them.
I've got the four.
Way better.
Okay.
If they're all done.
At this point, I have received four pieces of correspondence that I will read into the record and make it a part hereof. The first one is a letter to Alderman Woodward from Alice Sullivan. She resides at 603 Keoga Street. I will not be able to attend the next council meeting regarding the Wilson coming to Fulton. I would like to go on record against this company's plans to build a store on Anita Street and Seventh Street, or any place on Anita Street. The next letter is from Patricia Ives, 615 Keoga Street. Dear Mayor Stafford, I am against the proposed Wilson Farms on Anita Street because it is directly behind my house. The demolition of the buildings on the property line will destroy the plantings also on the property line, which create my tiny woodland sanctuary. I expect increased exhaust fumes, noise, and flooding, along with the criminal element which these type of stores attract. The possible loss of Morbidos is very disturbing. I cannot imagine being without the store and its friendly employees only half a block away. Wilson Farms has caused me much anguish, as my roots are deep, and I wish to remain here. Please consider the broader view of this project rather than just the financial aspect. We will truly gain more than we lose. P.S., we need Morbidos free shopper and delivery service to senior citizens. The next letter is from Mary Jane and Jack McGraw. We, as life residents of the city of Fulton, are against the rezoning of the Anita Street area for the purpose of building Wilson's Farms convenience store and gas station. We think that you are going to end up losing two locally-owned businesses in the proposed area for the sake of a larger foreign-owned company such as Wilson's Farms, who require special zoning. If they want to build another Wilson Farms, let them put it in a district already zoned for such a business. Take a look at the amount of employees that will be affected. When I go into Wilson Farms on West Broadway, the most employees I see is about two or three at one time. When I go to the Morbidos store on Keoga Street, I see six to eight employees at one time. When employees are affected, they move on the jobs outside the city and take their money with them. And the last is a letter that I received from Henry Hudson, president of Hudson's Dairy. Dear Mayor Stafford, as a longtime area business owner, I am writing this letter to inform you that I oppose the pending zone change that will allow a Wilson Farms to be built on Anita Street. I firmly believe that this proposed convenience store will not bring in any new business to Fulton. Instead, it will take revenue and jobs away from existing nearby stores, including one that has been family-run concern, like my business. In fact, the zone change may have an impact on my business. I currently provide a variety of dairy products to two stores within blocks of the proposed Wilson Farms. If the new store, which is owned by a corporation located outside of Fulton area, is built, it will sell milk products provided through their own distributor. However, I won't be the only longtime business affected by this new convenience store. The two stores, two nearby stores, I fear, will The two stores, two nearby stores, I fear, will also likely lose business. I also don't believe, as some have said, that the location of the new store will bring new shoppers to Fulton. Anita Street is not one of the city's major roads used by visitors that pass through the city. It's also been suggested that the new Wilson Farms will provide more jobs for our community. This too is not true. I believe that instead of creating new jobs, there will be a shift in employment. Where already-employed local workers will leave their current jobs to work at Wilson Farms. As you can see, I do not support the proposed zone change for sound reasons. Unfortunately, I will be out of town and unable to attend a common council meeting when this item is on the agenda. I sincerely hope you and the members of the council will give serious thought to how your vote will impact several longtime businesses, several local longtime businesses and current taxpayers. Thank you for your time. If you have any follow-up questions in this letter, please feel free to call my son. Those are the letters that I received. Now, I will open the floor for comments from the audience. Please come forward to the mic, state your name and address.
Your Honor, members of the council, my name is Ruth Berry, and I live in 63 South 5th Street. And it is a great tragedy that we lost Fulton Builders. I went there all the time, they helped me all the time. The paint wouldn't be peeling on my house if the painter had used their paint. It was a tragedy to lose them, but I don't want to have two tragedies. I need Maribodos there. They are within walking distance, they have been in our community a lot longer than 20 years. And the previous speakers talked about the commitment of Tops to our community. I will agree that Wilson Farms serves delicious coffee, my husband loves it. But I personally boycott Tops. They have too many rules. They won't let me buy my groceries with a check and a picture ID, New York State picture ID. I have to have a certain kind of card. They won't let my friend cash her checks unless she has two kinds of cards. That's annoying. I don't shop there. I don't get the feelings that they care about us. Maribodos does. I don't know how to fix stores going out of business in the whole great scheme of things. But we already have a Wilson Farms, we already have a Tops. Do we have to have lots of them? Or lots of Wilson Farms? I don't think it's fair. Our local businessmen are precious. We lost one, I'm sorry. I don't know how to fix that. I don't want to lose another one. And I need them. I walk to Top, or walk to Maribodos, not to Tops. Walk there. There's a whole lot of other people in my same position. So I feel that this would not be a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the common council. My name is Ed Vayner. I reside in the town of Granby, but I'm one of the developers of Water Tower Hill, which is the neighborhood of the project under question here tonight. I'm here tonight not as a, as a neighbor, but as a member of the board, a new member of the board, of the Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber of Commerce is in favor of this project, totally in favor of this project. I'm also here as a member of the, or as the chairman of the city marketing committee. Now, we haven't gotten an awful lot of notoriety out there, but we've worked with, actually two members of the common council are on the marketing committee, and we've worked to go out and reach out into the central New York area to bring new business to Fulton. Primarily new retail business, but also small industry and that type of business. We've developed some, through the good graces of the city, some marketing materials to attract business to the city. Most recently, we've run some advertising in business publications throughout the central New York area to attract business to the city. This, we believe, is an economic development question. It's a question of investment, it's a question of jobs, it's a question of bringing new business to the city. I think, I feel for the Morbidos, I know the Morbidos well, I am a customer of theirs, I frequently stop at their store. I think that if the council or any other legislative body gets into questions of competition, they're mis-serving the people of the community. Do we keep out Wilson Farms because of a nearby market? Do we keep out a shoe store because of Cortinis? Do we keep out another quality restaurant because of the lock or because of other restaurants in the city? I don't think those are decisions that the council should be making. The issue here is purely an issue of zoning. You have a commercial zone, you have a business that, a former business that is long-established at that site, a business that ran heavy trucks, a business that ran tow motors, I believe, in the backyard there. You've got a business that has gone out of, a property that is now abandoned and probably will end up as a property of the city. Now, you can go and you can hold it for a number of years, you can go and you can demolish it, you can go and you can offer the property for sale. Those are all alternatives. But to stop competition, I think you're doing the people a disservice, you're doing the business community a disservice. You know, we're not in the best of economic times here in Fulton, we're not in the best of economic times here in central New York. Things are difficult. I just heard tonight that one of our major industries here is requiring, is asking their people to take benefits away so they can stay in business. Now, this isn't generally known, but, you know, we know that Owens-Brockway is closed, we know that other industries have moved out of town. We know that other industries are, have been taken over by foreign companies, so I don't think we should be afraid of a foreign company coming in. Royal Ahold is a company that's traded on the New York Stock Exchange. I'm not here representing Ahold, or representing Tops, or representing Wilson Farms. But from an economic development standpoint, I think you can do nothing else but approve this, this zone change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Mosher, 771 South 1st Street. I'm not a neighbor of this area, the proposed site. I have an interest, I'm a customer of the Maribodo Grocery Store. And I oppose changing the zoning. And I disagree that this is simply a question of changing the zoning. Fulton is not a zone. Fulton is a community of people. And what makes a community? It's people supporting each other. I have a friend who is in the senior building at Pathfinder Courts. She doesn't get out, but her groceries come every week. And she looks forward to the groceries, yes, but she looks forward very much to the individual who brings those groceries. And I know that Maribodos delivers groceries to Pathfinder Courts once a week, the senior building. They, they offer also meals, they deliver groceries there, and also to Towpath, to our senior citizens. And we have to value the people in our community. Fulton is not a zone, it's a community. Also, I'd like to suggest that the hours, 6 o'clock to midnight, we have working families living around the proposed site. There is going to be exhaust, there is, there are going to be car doors slamming, motors running, street congestion. Now, I'm aware of the fact that Anita Street headed west. There can be congestion there going down the hill toward 481. And we're talking about tankers. Wilson Farms will have to be serviced. We know there are alternate sites in the community. So I am very much against the zone change. We are a community of people. Fulton is not a zone.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, common council. My name is Bill Summers. I live at 2079 State Route 48, and I'm retired. I understand that you've got your mind all made up, Mr. Lincoln? That you had a letter on the internet that you said you were going to...
A letter, a letter on the internet?
You said you were gonna sue if the mayor votes?
Well, now that you do...
Who are you suing?
Now, wait a second, Mr. Summers. Now that you do bring it up, and I was gonna bring it up a little later, there's a local law, okay, that's subject to public mandatory referendum, okay? This is New York State Municipal Home Rule Law, okay? Under Item B, in the case of a city, town, village, changes the membership or composition of the legislative body or increases or decreases the number of votes of which any number is entitled to, you have to have a public referendum. So if the mayor voted tonight, it would be illegal if it was a 3-3 tie.
And another thing, how come you don't listen to your constituents? You don't? You had your mind all made up before you can have this meeting tonight?
You know what? I got, I got six calls today, and you know where they all came from? Bodie's Tavern.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I don't own Bodie's Tavern.
That's where they came from, because I called the number back.
That is not relevant to this whatsoever.
I'm retired. You had your mind all made up before you come here tonight, right?
It's a public hearing, I'm looking for public comment.
You had your mind all made up?
That's what our city attorney told us that we had to do. That's what I told the people that called from Bodie's today, I said, "Come to the public hearing."
Who called from Bodie's?
I don't know who it was.
They didn't tell you who they were?
No, but I can give you the number.
Well, need the number.
I don't think that'll be necessary. Mr. Summers, do you have any more input? Anyone else have anything to speak on this issue?
[inaudible]
Apparently not.
Hi, I'm Barb Mulvey, I live at 615 Utica Street, which is about a block and a half from this proposed site. I also loved Fulton Builders Supply, and I, I know the Collins family, and I'm sorry for their business going out of business, but I am very much against this project. If you listen to Wilson Farms, it sounds like our neighborhood is missing something terrible, that we've been living there for 30 years not knowing what's missing, and they're ready to give it to us. I can't figure out what that is. If they go in there, I've heard that that land is higher than the surrounding land. Now, I don't know about any of you guys, maybe you guys don't ever make mistakes, but sometimes when we fill our gas tank, we spill some. I know some people buy oil and they spill some. I know that people spill antifreeze. It may not be a lot, a little here, a little there, but when it rains, it's gonna end up in those people's backyards. Also, this place is gonna be open from 6:00 a.m. until midnight. We already have teenagers wandering the streets, they're gonna be able to buy beer any time of the day or night, they're gonna be wandering the streets through our neighborhoods in groups. In the middle of the summer, it's gonna be terrible. They're gonna be buying convenience things, soda pop, they're gonna be buying potato chips and stuff, and all that's gonna be tossed because they won't want to carry that home. It'll be too much of a bother to put it in their pocket or carry it with them. We're gonna have to deal with that mess. We're gonna have to deal with the noise of them coming and going. We're gonna have, the people who live directly near that property is gonna have to deal with the lights of the cars as they go by, and people honking at each other who are angry with each other, and people getting ticked off at each other. The Wilson's Farm across the way had a big fight over there a while ago. My sister-in-law lives down near Elmira, they have a lot of Wilson's Farms down there, and they get robbed regularly down there. All of these things are gonna be bad for our neighborhood. Now, there also been this threat that if you guys don't propose this and Wilson Farms doesn't go in there, that the city's gonna get stuck with that property because of the taxes. I would ask you guys to be very generous and to forgive the taxes. Don't take over the property. I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm gonna pull this down just a minute. I'm Cindy Payne, and I'm here on behalf of the Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce. I am immediate past chairman of the board, and I would like to say on behalf of the Greater Fulton Chamber of Commerce, I am here tonight to express a support for this project. The chamber's position is to welcome business to the community. We are an organization that actively solicits new businesses to come to this area. If the chamber is going to be successful in attracting new business to the area, then we must do all that can be done to facilitate businesses that are looking to locate here. While we certainly can understand some of the concerns expressed here tonight, the chamber believes that every business deserves a chance to succeed. There is no guarantee that this project will be successful at that location. There is no guarantee that any of us will be in business in the future, we must tend to our own houses in that regard. However, they have completed extensive studies and do not lightly go into these situations. The fact that they continue to pursue this location indicates their strong belief in this community and strong belief in their probability of success. We believe that if Fulton is going to be successful in attracting new businesses, then Fulton needs to welcome new businesses with open arms rather than present obstacles which are discouraging to business. Another key point I would like to make is that by expanding the business base, we enhance the area's overall quality of life. A business locating on the site under consideration will generate dollars. It will generate dollars from property taxes, school taxes, county taxes, as well as sales taxes for the city. It will also generate monies in the form of employee salaries. Those employees are likely to be local residents who are in need of jobs. The money the employees make will likely find its way right back into our local economy. In closing, let me reaffirm the chamber's support of this business's request for a zone change from C1 to C2. As commercial businesses have existed on that corner for many, many years and have been good neighbors to those who live in the surrounding neighborhood, so will Wilson Farms. Be a benefit to the neighborhood, the city, and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Mulvey, I live at 615 Utica Street, and I've lived in this neighborhood for 30 years. Right now, there's so much smoke and mirrors in this room that it's hard to tell what's going on. People talk about money coming in. Well, golly gee, last time we were here, these people said that they didn't want an alternate location because they want it to be in a more residential place because they cater to walk-ins. This isn't people coming from out, out of town to come into town and spend their money and give us sales tax, walk-ins. What that's gonna do, it just means that the same tax is gonna be collected at a different location. No new tax, just a different collection point. People talk about competition. Well, gee, I think it's strange that they're picking a spot where there are two other stores within two blocks, and if those two stores go down the tubes, guess who the only closest grocery store is gonna be? It's gonna be Tops, a mile away. This isn't about money. I said this the last time we had this meeting, the last time when they were turned down. I don't know how many times we have to have the same meeting over and over again. It's not about money, it's about the character of a neighborhood and about the character of the people involved. We can see the character of the local business people we deal with. The local business people provide free shopping and free delivery to the elderly people in our community. The local business people accept personal checks in payment. The local business people cash checks for people who need some cash. The local business people have lived here themselves and know the people around here and are loved by the people around here. The local business people care about the people in their community. As far as the character of the people from Wilson Farms, well, we can see that very clearly. Last time, there were very thinly veiled threats of how they're gonna stick it to the city for the cost of demo- of how they're gonna stick it to the city for the cost of demolition if you don't give them this variance. Now, today, there are threats that if you don't give them this variance, they're gonna come in in a year or so from now and maybe really pounce on the competition and put them out. This is about character. We don't need barracudas in our neighborhood doing business. I don't care how fancy their place of business is. I don't care how nice they dress. We need people with character. People who represent the people of our city who are good people. People who care about the people in our city and not about the cash flow. It's about character. The character of the people and the character of the neighborhood. I have a lot more to say, but I think I'd better not. And as far as this goes, I'm very upset about the way this has been handled. It was turned down by the zoning board. It was turned down at the last public hearing. Now we have another public hearing, and we have some strange manipulation of the votes. I don't know what's going on here, but I don't like it. And I know I'm gonna remember all this when election time comes around. Because we need people of character, not only as business people in our area, but we need people of character for our public officials. Character, not cash flow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melanie Piter, 609 Oneida Street.
Could you pull the mic down just a little bit? There.
I have a few issues that, some of them have been covered. Noticed filling up at a gas station that there's a health warning hanging above the pumps. We have counted 14 children under the age of 10 that live in the 600 block of Oneida Street alone. Seven of them are under the age of two. I would like to know what kind of health issues would be facing the generation of this community. It's a mostly quiet residential neighborhood with a large population of children of all ages. I ask concern about the clientele that'll be going to the establishment. What kind of impact is that gonna be on our children? Another major concern is our lack of drainage. Every time we have a rainstorm, three-quarters of that road is flooded, which spills into our yards, into our cellars, and everything else. The drainage cannot hold the water. It's gonna be washing the contaminants from the gas station that the public spills into our yards and our houses. It was determined the last time the addition of Wilson Farms was not gonna really bring in more population to shop here in the community, but disperse what we had. I, however, feel that it's gonna take away from our local small businesses that live, pay taxes, and are raising their families right here in the community. I don't feel we should be giving our business to a large corporation. I think we should be supporting our small businesses. I realize the property's been commercial property since the turn of the century, but they've always conformed to our residential neighborhood. We had the evenings at nighttime where the businesses were closed so we could enjoy our properties. I've lived in that area since 1968. So I realize, you know, we have too many small children just in that one block that I know of. We really don't, it's not the ideal solution for our neighborhood. And one of the health warnings here is long-time exposure to the vapors has caused cancer in laboratory animals. And these are visible right above gas pumps at your local gas stations. Therefore, I am opposed to Wilson Farms.
Okay, what would you name it in, please?
Melanie Piter.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Rutledge, City of Fulton Community Development Agency. The City of Fulton Community Development Agency is the economic development entity for the city, and I offer the following observations. However, I'd also like to note that these comments are not necessarily going to reflect the views of the members of the Board of the City of Fulton Community Development Agency, since the Board is the economic council of the City of Fulton. Wilson Farms has not submitted a loan package to the CDA, nor is this location within the city's economic development zone. The developer will not be eligible for any benefits offered through EDZ, yet they will still make a substantial investment in the community. I believe the figure was a million dollars. Several of the aldermen had mentioned an alternative for the site as residential development. Fulton Builders has been Zoned C1 and has operated as a commercial business for over 50 years. A zone change would, in fact, be required for new housing construction. In 1994, Fulton Community Revitalization Corporation developed eight single-family homes at Copper Beach, each selling for $60,000, with $15,000 provided as a grant to underwrite the selling price for a mortgage of $45,000. The last unit was just sold in December of 2000. In discussion with Mike Egan today, the superintendent of schools, Philip Street School Site has been available on the market since 1995, and it's a very desirable residential site suitable for new construction. However, the city building permit records for new construction, residential building permits for 1999 show zero building permits issued, and for 2000, one building permit issued. If this site remains unsold, as Dennis mentioned, it's quite reasonable to assume that this property will end up in the hands of the city through a tax foreclosure proceeding, with the city responsible for asbestos, lead-based paint abatement, and demolition costs. Many of you will recall the last gift that the city had was the former YMCA for a dollar. I'd like to mention that while we secured $150,000 in HUD grant funding, the total cost for asbestos abatement, engineering, and demolition was $219,821, almost $70,000 over the available grant funding. And while demolition is certainly an eligible cost under the CDBG program, that money was provided as a grant to the city to underwrite the costs from the revolving loan fund, and it was never recaptured, and it will never be available, obviously, for loaning again. Wilson Farms on West Broadway initially projected five full-time employees, and as of January 2000, they had actually created eight. That's per their EDZ annual business report. Their 2,000 numbers are not yet available for us. While there's no way to project accurate sales tax revenues for Wilson Farms, their EDZ application denoted annual sales projections of 1.5 million. The Fulton Tax Assessor, Diane Moore, indicates the city could expect the assessment for a Wilson Farms-type development to be at least $500,000. The existing Wilson Farms is assessed at $707,000. Fulton Builders is currently assessed at 330. However, the property was listed for sale at 229. Vacant buildings are always a concern to the community as the opportunity for vandalism, and particularly a fire, is greater the longer the structure remains vacant. I believe the mayor will remember the Kamenak Building as a perfect example. The old YMCA building had been vandalized a number of times prior to demolition and was particularly dangerous because there happened to be an empty swimming pool remaining in the building, and obviously, there were no lights on. A fire in a very old wooden structure can spread very quickly, threatening many adjoining properties. I support the Fulton Planning Commission member Ken Patrick's concern about reasonable expectation for the site, as there has been very little interest in new residential construction in the city, and it is reasonable to assume the building will be sold for commercial rather than residential use. Mr. Patrick also indicated that if approved, Wilson Farms would still be required to complete the site plan review process through the Fulton Planning Commission. Neighbors with concerns about traffic, lighting, screening, ingress egress will be able to voice their concern to the Fulton Planning Commission through the site plan review process. If a commercial entity purchases the building, makes no changes to the structure, they can literally go in there, open the door, and start business with no additional review or approval process. Neighbors will have some control through site plan review, but none if the building is opened and becomes operational as it exists. Mr. Patrick also notes the existing C1 zoning designation allows for limited commercial use, abutting a residential district for the following uses, and I'll just point out a few. A church or other place of worship, religious education center, which I would assume would be tax-exempt. A social club or lodge. A restaurant/eating and/or a drinking establishment. In completion, I would say, let's continue to send a positive message to the potential developers of this world, the Steve Thomases. Fulton has always welcomed new business development, and I hope will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Would it be proper for me to say something at this point?
Yes.
I'll try to keep it short.
By all means.
I listened to what Carol said just now, and I've listened to this tonight really close. And what she says is partially true. We haven't attracted a lot of single-family homes because nobody wants to live in our city because our neighborhoods have went down. They went downhill. And I don't ever remember since 1982, since I got on this council, when the neighborhood in the Oneida Street and Kirger Street area encroached on the businesses where Fulton Builders was. In fact, they expanded, and the zoning was changed to expand that area. Fulton Builders was a good business, and we'll miss it. As we did our downtown, look at it. I mean, over the years, what we had and what we have now, times change. But when you look at neighborhoods, do we improve the character of our neighborhoods by saying, "We're not gonna take it over and go back to residential"? I mean, we encouraged, through your agency in the state of New York, to bring tons of rental units in this town, and they didn't help the character of our neighborhoods. They made people who were professionals that we wanted to come here and not want to live here. I'm having a hard time understanding how anybody's gonna wanna live in an area when this council, and me, and everyone else is not willing to take our neighborhoods and make them neighborhoods again. There is no reason for somebody wanting to come here in a single-family home and raise small children. Where do we start? Everybody that wants to do something here don't live here. And everybody that lives here, we say, "Well, you know, we're gonna raise your taxes if you don't do this." And that's just what we're saying. Where do we stop? We took the Kamenak Building. It was a pig in a poach, and we did it, and we all bucked up to it, and we handled it financially, and now we can make it more productive. I think we could do that. What would be the harm if the city ended up with that, and young families moved in there? Would it cost us? Sure it would. So now, we have people, just about everybody with the exception of one person, the three letters that the mayor read about tonight, and some of the people I see here tonight are longtime members of our community, senior citizens. They're the anchors around that area. And when they're gone, what do we do? We take their homes and turn them into business? Or do we make four-family apartments out of them so nobody else wants to live here? That's what we're talking about. For the ones that litter the street with garbage, they're the ones that make us have to hire 10, five or 10 people in the code enforcement that we try to balance between the ten or inches of this city and the people that are the anchors here. Somewhere along the line, we gotta bite the bullet. And I understand your feeling, Carol. It's all financial, and I'm concerned about a financial tool. I work at a major industry that we're talking about. It's teetering, literally. And I want a room here. I wanna pay taxes, and my children live here, but I think sooner or later, we gotta say, where does the council, what, this is the finding issue for this council. What do you think of your neighborhoods? What do you want to do with them? You wanna keep turning them into something where people don't wanna live? That's what you're doing. We did it with, probably 15 years ago, we went to the state and said, "Gee, we don't get, we haven't got federal money. We got a bunch of people sitting over in our building in the community development, and you see, maybe we better get more HUD so we can keep the jobs here." And what happened? We had to go out and hire a bunch of people in code department because we can't even keep up with the garbage. The people, they don't live here, they don't care. They're here today, gone tomorrow. Where do you draw the line? Who cares about the town that we live in? Is everything money? Don't we care about those people that live here? I look out here, and I see a bunch of them. I heard the letters from three of them, and I, you need to see the human side. Those people that wrote those letters didn't come down here because they didn't think it was important. One of them couldn't come, or two of them couldn't come here. One for age and one for physical disability. These are the places they're like to, and they should be important to us. Because if Wilson Farms is thinking about putting a place somewhere else, maybe, Bob, it's over by you. And you never had the problem that I had in the sixth ward or Holly had in the fifth ward. But you're familiar with them because you lived here a good part of your life. So, Carol, I think the world of you, and you've worked close with me, and I understand where you're coming from. But people are important. They really are. Money is too, but so are the people. Because their homes aren't, who's gonna wanna buy their homes? Who cares, right? We didn't encroach on the businesses in the neighborhoods. They encroached on us. The mayor just put me on a committee where we're gonna try to define where our master plan for the city, and I would hope that we could look at it and have places where people can live and raise families, and places where only businesses can go, and it stops there. If every time somebody holds out a quarter to us and says, "You better change the zone, or you're gonna lose this," then we're in trouble. We're gonna keep up with the same. Most of these people don't live here. They don't want to live here. But half of the ones that spoke tonight in favor would don't live here, and they probably wouldn't. I don't blame them.
Kathy Trobridge, I can't tell you how you inspire me all the time, but this is exactly what an alderman goes through every single time an issue comes back. And what Ron says is passionate. I was a neighborhood preservationist. I believed in the heart of what Ron's saying. And yet, we struggle with the good ideas of the CDA that we serve and the financial needs of this community. But I do agree, I can't sell my house in the fifth ward. I think Maribodos has the best meat in town, and I don't care what grocery store you bring in here. These are the things we struggle with. And what got us here, and what is more bothersome, and why I came down here, because I hate being the alderman that comes in, and I've stayed away, you don't wanna say this, but what John Lincoln has talked about, the controversy that's in the paper has been upsetting, is this 50-50 vote. Three votes for, the Wilsons Farm wouldn't have even been an issue to us. Three against, no tiebreaker. That is a dilemma in our, right here in the city. But what I say to that is, "Hooray for a tiebreaker." That means no, and no means we've gotta step back, as Mr. Woodward said. There was a problem. Whatever the reasons are, no does not shut down the city. A tie does not shut down the city. A tie makes aldermen step back and work and see what's best for their community. And it is a struggle every day. We want stores to come in here. We want businesses to come in here. But nobody will buy a home. Nobody will build homes in this community. It is getting that bad. Code enforcement is getting bad. The streets are starting to fall apart again. And I don't mean that negatively. I'm saying we have hard choices to make. So of course, we need money to fix the streets, of course. But pretty soon, all these good people will not live in this community. I wanted to move my grandmother, who's 92, to Fulton because of Maribodos, because I said, "Gram, if I couldn't be there..." That is such a great service. And Mr. Thompson, you represent the people of Topat Towers. There's no better service in this city than what people that belong to the city bring to the city. I don't say that the Tops people or the Wilsons Farm people are meaning they want to come in. Of course, they want competition. That's a great spot. But there's other spots. But the need, the one argument I heard is a need for a store there flies in the face. Maribodos meets our needs. And the Tops market does come along to bus people from Topat. What do we need it for? I don't understand that argument. But what I'm saying is just so people understand, because I sit here, and it brings all those memories up of sitting in the alderman's chair. You wanna do what's right for this city, and every one of you do. I know you do. And when there's a three-three tie, the tie means no, and that means that either the alderman that were for it didn't fight hard enough, or the alderman that were against it didn't fight hard enough. That means you're a better alderman if you get back together. And the mayor is part of the common council, and the mayor has everything at his disposal to say, "I'm gonna bring in the attorneys. I'm gonna bring in the department heads. I'm gonna bring in the CDA and all the business people. And I'm gonna prove, and I'm gonna make my case that either Maribodos is more important or... I'm going to make my case that either Maribito's is more important or Wilson's Farm is more important." He has all that at his disposal. So, to give away, for an alderman to give away the power of his vote so that it's easy for a mayor, it's a tiebreaker. What if three of you get in a room and say, "I'm not going to vote for that issue, it's a hot issue." Let the mayor be stuck with it. Let him hang his hat. You know how hard that would be, Mayor Stafford, because you, as yourself, sit at desk and read pros and cons, and your heart pulls for each one of those. You have a responsibility to the taxpayer, and you have a responsibility to the good people of this community, and it's hard. You've got to listen to them. So, I'm saying, I don't want to take a position. Collins Family was a good business. That was a family business that catered to us, that helped us with the colors of our pains. That's what we were fighting for with Maribito's. Very difficult decision, but my... What bothers me tonight is there could be a vote, and it could be three, and it could be three. I have never asked any of you how you're going to vote on this, but I do... I do not understand, or I like, if there is a vote to be broken. I think the community should study that a little bit harder and see more of the charter language that we had to look at, because I think if it is, has to go up for referendum, or if it's just a matter of wording, I really think we have to think about that, because I think aldermen have to get together, because a 3-3 vote before told me that it really isn't studied. And either they have to give more information or more convincing to the community, or they have to go to a different spot, or the people that are from Maribito's have to come in more force. But I don't want to see a mayor breaking a vote for three aldermen, because when that three, those three aldermen voted a tie vote, no meant no, and no meant that it really wasn't done well, and there's too many questions for this community to say that we can feel comfortable making either decision. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, Devin Delpas, again, from Laker Development Group. I think one of the things that has been fairly significant theme this evening is not one necessarily of zone change, whether or not gasoline makes sense, it's purely whether or not it's going to impact the local businesses exist, Maribito's. What I've also heard is an extremely strong and very loyal following on the part of folks for Maribito's. They deliver, they have a butcher shop, they have very strong support. With that strong support, businesses don't go away. End of story. Maribito's is going to be there. We actually were offered a parcel of property that Maribito's owns. They offered to sell it to us in the similar area, but it was turned down because it didn't make sense for us. Maribito's has a strong support. Don't forget that. A lot of these folks here tonight are here because of their strong support for Maribito's, and will continue to shop at Maribito's. What you're going to see with this development is you're going to see five buildings that are deteriorating, currently a fire hazard, go away, and you're going to see a new development happen that's going to improve the neighborhood as opposed to what's there now on that corner. You're going to see green area, you're going to see it maintained at a very high standard by a company that has a long-term commitment to the area. And I think those are very important factors to consider. We're not saying that Maribito's is going to go out of business. I don't think you can say that when you're seeing support like that here. It's not an either-or thing, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak on this?
Tom Maribito. I want, first of all, I want to thank everybody here that is backing on this, and I want to speak in two lights. First of all, as a business owner there, yes, I do have the meat department, I do have the delivery, but I also have a convenience store. I need that convenience store business to keep the rest of it going. Yes, I have some loyal people, but there are people who aren't loyal. We're going to take that... They're coming in there to target that area, or the boundary takes them away. I need that business to keep mine going. Enough said on that. Also, I'm a property owner in the area, and I see no way a gas station is going to improve the property. Would you want to live next to a gas station? Would you want to live next to a gas station? No, I don't think so. They, what you said, they're looking for other areas in the city. They might want to go up near Nestle or Maple Leaf or something like that, over on the west side. You've got to think about that. These people here do not want that in their neighborhood. They do not want a gas station there. Listen to them. To give to them now, they're going to be coming in here, they're next, you're setting the precedent. Also, your planning commission has turned this idea down. Listen to them as well. You want a master plan for the city, let it begin. And price charge forward. If I do go out, let it begin. Take it.
Thank you.
Another empty voting.
Anyone else?
If I may, I know my field presentation was very dry. I'll be extremely brief. First of all, I want to just echo some of the comments from Mr. Delpas. I agree, Mr. Maribito, I think that's a fantastic business, as evidenced here by his support. There were a couple of things that I just wanted to make sure that I clarified. One was, it was not a threat in regards to having a bigger store. It actually was in direct response to a question the board had posed to me last time, and that was, "Could you survive on this site without gasoline?" And the initial response was, internally, when we looked at it, absolutely not, even if the land was free. The recent change in where we might be headed as a company is to have another offering, which I think would more directly compete with Maribito, and all it was doing was addressing a response. I... We do not know how to run them profitably yet. We haven't learned the business yet. It may not be an option for this location. It may not even be an option for me in upstate New York. But I was still addressing a question, and the information I have now, it is a possibility in the future. The only other clarification was from Carol Rutledge. Had a report showing that there are eight full-time employees in the report at our existing Wilson Farms. And earlier, I had stated that we would employ about 20 people. I just wanted to clarify that that includes part-timers. So, if anyone picked up on the difference between number of employees, that would be the difference.
I have a question. A couple of people brought up the possibility of spills oil...
Oh, yes.
...gasoline from the customers that would get off the property.
Yes, so let me address that in two ways, because I think there were two separate and distinct issues. One was customers driving up and antifreeze, oil, stuff spilling from the car that has nothing to do with the gasoline. I would suggest that that would be the same whether we have gasoline or not, and therefore would not be an issue in front of the board. It'd be part of the planning board with oil separators and how we handle the property as we would with any retail use there without gasoline. The other issue, though, however, is specific to the gasoline. People fill up with their nozzle, and as we all know, there are a couple of drips of gasoline, or you can't have a couple of drips of gasoline. The gasoline does evaporate into the air. If there ever were enough to where there would be a spill, of course, we have procedures in place with a spill kit and other things, but for the small area around the tanks, I mean, around the pumps, there is a positive barrier. It's a concrete... The island mat is a concrete mat, and it has grooves put in it and a positive barrier around it. So, if ever there were any little bit of spill, even if rainwater were to wash a little bit of gasoline down, it stays in that positive barrier and evaporates.
Now, in the situation with having to have a sign up, there, I guess, are signs at gas pumps. This pitcher, I believe, had that, a sign that says, "Constant inhalation of the vapors has been known to cause cancer."
The vapors don't leave the site, so I don't think that's an issue beyond the gasoline industry in terms of filling up. The vapors don't leave from the gas pumps to the neighbors. In fact, there's a fire code, and I wish I brought it, but certainly it could be researched by the board, but you have vapor pipes as part of the tanks in case there ever were pressure buildup. There, it could release pressure. And those vapors can be within, I think it's about 10 or 15 feet from a second-story building adjacent to it. So, the federal code says even the worst-case scenario is still within 10 or 15 feet of a potential hazard with people next door. So, clearly, we're not anywhere near that in our site plan, and the issues of vapors at the pumps, I don't think are an issue with the surrounding neighborhood.
And earlier, I believe, I heard you say that you might be able to be flexible with hours.
Yes.
There was, I heard a lot of concern tonight over hours, 6:00 at night till midnight, and disrupting the neighborhood.
The coffee is a very important part of our business. It's what we do best, I think, in many aspects of our business. A coffee is one of our better signatures. So, the 6:00 AM part is very important to us. The midnight is not. 10:00 PM becomes very important to us. 11:00 PM, I think, would be a happy medium, but midnight by no means is something that would prohibit it. If you were to restrict us to, say, 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM, I don't think it would prohibit us from being able to move forward.
Does the company work to... With local law enforcement or local zoning to keep people from congregating on the property? There was some concern of young people congregating, is a place for young people to congregate at night?
Yes, there always is a balancing act between having too much light and too little light. More light, less of an opportunity people have to hang around. Of course, the more light in this particular location, the more of an impact on the neighbors. So, we have enough where we think we're a deterrent, and of course, we... Our policy is not to allow people to hang out at our location. I don't know what the situation with our Wilson Farms is here in town, if that is happening, if it has been a concern. I'd be happy to hear those comments, but...
I haven't heard complaints about that, but just, this was one of the things that was brought up.
And the comment about Elmira is actually news to me. If we're having the problems that are, that were suggested this evening, then that is news to me. I do get notified on when we do have problem areas, and Elmira has not been on the list. So, there may have been a couple of isolated incidents, but I'd be surprised if it's an ongoing concern.
The existing situation, Mayor Devin Delpas again, is actually more conducive to congregation of folks than one with light and improved. I mean, it's dark. Kids could go and hang out. It's a great place to go and hang out if you're a kid. Nobody can see you. But one of the points that I wanted to bring up with respect to the spill, the whole site, the whole paved area is all curbed, so it's important that, to know that all of that is contained as well, just for your permission.
Okay. Mayor, I have a question, please. I don't know, the Laker Development?
Yes, sir.
I don't know what your name is. Correct me on this. You did mention that there was another Marbito site that you were looking at?
Yes, sir. It was a property owned by...
Okay. For the same purpose?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you disclose that site?
I'm in Route 3.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
According to the map I have here, it is less than half a mile from this site and from Maribito's existing business, and in fact, would service the same neighborhood. However, it's on the outskirts of the neighborhood, and that goes against what our research department would like to see for servicing the needs. It gets away to the earlier comment, I forget who made it, about foot traffic.
Alan Mulvey, I'd just like to make a few comments about some of the things that they said about some of the things that we had said. For one thing, anybody who can convince an Oswegoanian that they can control the wind is a hell of a salesman. To say that gasoline vapors will not escape from the premise is absolutely absurd. And I would like everyone on this council to just take a walk through the city and walk on the sidewalk past our existing gas stations and try to not smell gasoline. I don't think you'll be able to do it. As far as gasoline being a non... Being a zero-residue product as far as its evaporation is concerned, that's an outright lie. Anybody who's ever spilled gasoline on their car knows that it leaves residue. Certainly, gasoline is volatile, and much of it evaporates, but it doesn't all evaporate. The additives in it do not evaporate. The additives are some of the more toxic components. Maybe every customer is only going to spill a few drops, but they're talking about being there for 20 years. And how many thousands of customers, or hundreds of thousands of customers multiplied over that time? How much of this toxic stuff is going to enter into our environment? How much of these fumes are not going to be allowed to blow into the neighbors' yards? Just think about some of the absurdities of things you've heard tonight, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David Spencer. I live at 419 Seneca Street, and I'm here opposed to the rezoning. And basically, I think it boils down to that we don't necessarily not want competition. I think it comes down to fair competition. And as Mr. Marbito said, he does have a convenience store. That probably brings in enough money for him to be able to offer those services that he does offer. And I think that in the long run, if he was to lose that to the competition, that the community itself would lose a great deal. And I think we'd end up with one more gas station in Fulton and one less community... One less business that really helps the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Poyneer. I live at 830 Utica Street, and I won't be boring you with any more than what you've already heard. You're not going to make everybody happy. What you do have to do is listen to the community, listen to the voters, listen to the people that are concerned about this zoning change. I oppose it. I encourage anybody else that's here to come up. If you're for it, say you're for it. If you're opposing it, oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I don't have anything else to say right now, but one of the ladies over here asked me to give the council this print of a sign from one of the local gas station listing all the health hazards from the fumes and from the gasoline.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak on this?
Counsel, my name's Ken Collins. I do not own Fulton Builder Supply. I own property adjacent to it. We've heard a lot of good for Marbito's. People speak about Marbito's, but this is free enterprise system. I don't believe a store there, convenience store, would hurt Marbito's. It's more for gas. It's more for the person that comes in, gets a cup of coffee, a pack of cigarettes, they're out. You get a paper, they're out. I own property next to the buildings that are going to be torn down. I think it would be better for the city to have these torn down, or the developer to tear these down than to have the city tear these down. I also know that Mr. Ives is here, and he had a letter in the paper. He could want to read the survey stakes about a foot of his garage is on the property that was surveyed, and I think he has concern about that. Mrs. Sullivan wrote a letter to the city, to the mayor. That house is owned by Tom Marbito. I don't know. She's lived there for a lot of years, been a neighborhood, a good neighborhood person, but Tom Marbito does own that house. There are some funny questions I haven't... Can't answer in my own mind, but as far as bringing another business into the city, I think it would be good for the city. The buildings are not going to go away. Agway's fallen down, that's not going to go away. Knights has fallen down, that's not going to go away. There's going to be a lot of cost here, and if somebody will come in and take some of this cost away from us, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Russ Johnson. I serve, in a unique perspective here, I serve, number one, as a former resident of the neighborhood. Gussy there, I've been there all my life, and Gussy's the queen of the neighborhood. I also served as the legislator for the District Twenty-Five, sort of county legislature. Ironically, my district is, it breaks off in the middle of Oneida Street. However, I do have a concern. I remember being a child, and from my personal perspective, where I would go to Mr. Marbido's store with my food stamps that my mom would give us. Gussy would always give me a cookie on my way to the store. And I do empathize with the concern of business, and then additional business, more business competing with each other, but I respectfully disagree with any concept from any politician or any government official that we need to intervene with business. Business, as Mr. Collins said, is private enterprise, and for government to take a role one way or the other, or to stay on one side or the other, that's certainly contrary what government is for. It's been pretty clear, and I appreciate the comments and the response that I got from some of the aldermen in terms of my letter that I sent back in the fall. It's pretty clear where I stand on this. I'm for growth. I'm for business growth. I think it's good for the city. I do empathize, and I listen to Mr. Mulvey, Mulvey, when he talks about the concern of gas vapors. I know of no statistics, maybe they're out there, but I know of no statistics where neighborhoods having gas stations have caused a significant health problem. Mr. Mulvey may later on might be able to shed some light on that. But we've got a lot of things that we need to look at. I'm going to leave the danger and the police, law enforcement aspect out of that, even though I do serve in the police department as well. I'll leave that to Chief Spahn, because I'm sure that he's capable of talking about that. But from a legislator's perspective, and a person who also lived in the neighborhood, I see no reason why we wouldn't want this to go through. The real issue here needs to be gasoline, and I've heard some of the speakers say that. I haven't been able to be here for everything, because I also serve on the Board of Director for the Regional Market, which, by the way, in two months, fresh fruit and vegetables, sort of Syracuse Regional Market.
Why did you move? Why did you move away?
That's a good question. Let me address that. There has been some concern. The question was, why did I move away? Well, I outgrew the home that I lived in. I've never outgrown the neighborhood. My wife was pregnant with two children. She was pregnant for twins. We needed a much bigger home. Unfortunately, we lost our twins, but we'd already made a commitment to the home. That's my neighborhood. I've been there all my life.
I heard you were for it, and then you moved, you were against it.
Well, that's simply not true, sir. Mr. Ives, that's not true. I've been for this from day one. I think it's good for the community. It's going to be good for the bigger good, too. For the bigger good of this city is something that we certainly need to look into. And I would, I know you have a tough decision here, man, but do it with your best conscience. Don't let the competition of business be the sole reason why you vote for or against this. It needs to be the better good of the city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Backpoint invitation only. Since my name was mentioned by a previous speaker, I would like to comment on his comments. Number one, I am a police officer also, but I still live in the neighborhood. I didn't bail out, and I'm not planning on bailing out. And number two, the information I presented about the health hazards of gasoline was not my opinion, but the opinion, I believe, of the federal government of the United States, who requires these signs to be posted, and the state of New York. So, I am merely pointing out things taken by judicial notice by the governing authorities of our land, that gasoline is toxic, that gasoline vapors are toxic. Thank you.
Alderman Sherman, could you pass that back down here so that we can make everybody privy to what we had?
Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, the other two as well?
Yeah. The health warning that is above a gas pump someplace, and probably at all gas stations. It's a health warning. Harmful or fatal if swallowed. Yes? Long-term exposure to vapors has caused cancer in laboratory animals. Okay? Avoid prolonged breathing, avoid prolonged breathing of vapors. Keep face away from nozzle and gas tank. Keep away from eyes and skin. Never siphon by mouth. Failure to use caution may cause serious injury or illness. Well, I see this as being a prolonged, in prolonged proximity to these vapors. And I think people go and gas up their cars, and most of the gas stations today are self-service. I know that I do myself quite a bit, and it doesn't appear to be a problem. And those stations that have full service, have people working there on a daily basis, and as long as you avoid prolonged breathing of vapors, I don't see it as a problem. Yes, are some vapors going to get in the air? Yes. Are they going to dissipate? I think so. If it wasn't for, if it was, yes, it is toxic, but if it was that bad, how could we use it? How could we pump it and use it in our vehicles, if that's the case? But I just wanted everybody to know what this sign said. Anybody else care to speak on this?
My name is Bob Collins, and I am the President of Fulton Builder Supply Company, Incorporated. And I would like to start by saying that I have lived in the direct neighborhood of Fulton Builder Supply all my life. I'm fifty years old. For twenty-five years, I lived adjacent to the property, and twenty-five years ago, I became the President and the owner of Fulton Builder Supply Company. So, I have lived in this neighborhood, and I have worked in this neighborhood for fifty years, and I know everyone that is here. And I think I even know them better than the aldermen might know them. And if we went around and started naming names, I would know their families, and I'd know their children, and I know their backgrounds. And I appreciate very much to see them come here tonight on such an important issue. I want to say first that if this was to go through, I certainly am still going to shop at Tom Marbido's. I am never not going to shop at there. And I have to come in now from town, probably drive ten miles to shop sometimes over to towns, but I'm not going to let that go. And I don't think anyone that's in this room is going to let that go. I also think that there are general concerns for gasoline, and I think that's something that I thought about, too. But Fulton Builder Supply's position is basically this. I was in the community for fifty years. I'm not going to let the property go downhill any longer and not have something reasonably, respectfully, good happen to it. I can say without candor that, yes, if there was a no vote, the zone change didn't go through, probably, more than likely, the city will own this on back taxes. They know that. It's not a threat. It's not men as a threat. That leaves them responsible to develop it. It's an easy way out for Fulton Builder Supply. On the other hand, Fulton Builder Supply has creditors. It isn't bankrupt, as the paper called up and asked, are you bankrupt? No, we're not bankrupt. If we were to sell this property to someone who was respectful, we would probably come out of it breaking even. Fulton Builder Supply has no way of gaining either way. So, I looked at it in that respect and said, what do I owe my neighbors? I owe my neighbors a business, because a business will go in there, that is probably safe, clean, and reasonable, and something that we have control over as a neighborhood. And we do have control over this. They're voting on the zone, but we can go back to the planning zone, planning board, and we can ask for our sidewalks, and we can ask for the time of day that we want that place to close, and we can ask for it to be green again, like it really could be. So, I say to you, neighbors, I say, yes, it is a gas station. It's better than what is there now. It's better than what could be there, and it is something that there is a future in. I chose it as a responsible way. I hope that you, as neighbors, consider that while it is an inconvenience, and no one likes to live next to a neighbor, to a gas station, I think it's better than living next to a lumberyard. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the committee, my name is Leah Hagerty, and I'm the broker-owner of Century Twenty-One here in Fulton. I represent the Collins on the sale of this property. I did want to talk to Mr. Woodward in respect to the possibility of rezoning, because I think it's a very, it's reality. The current values in the area for the single family and the multi-families are, they range between forty and sixty thousand dollars. And we would be grossly mistaken to think that if this commercial site was ever to be rezoned residential, that even if the lots were given away, that I, as a real estate broker or a real estate consultant, could ever encourage someone to build a new home there, with the expensive building costs being as they are, seventy to eighty thousand dollars for a small twelve-hundred-square-foot ranch, when they can pick a building lot, for example, in Tannery Village, and those lots go for eleven thousand dollars, and they would be among homes between eighty and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, I'd re, to share a relationship to any client that I would have that would be building or any other real estate broker in the area, we'd have to lay out the prices and the risks if you put in an eighty-thousand-dollar house in a forty to sixty-thousand-dollar neighborhood, or you can put your eighty-thousand-dollar house in an eighty to a one-hundred-and-eighty thousand-dollar neighborhood. But as Carol Rutledge has pointed out, building permits in our area are very few and far between. So, it's sad, but it's reality. It's what's happening right now.
Can I ask you a question? What makes it a forty to sixty-thousand-dollar neighborhood?
Because that's the average price range in the area.
About why? What's different about there than Tannery Village? I think there's a few people in here that know.
Who makes those decisions are the buyers, and it's a more sought-after area, so it's, being a more sought-after area, it drives the prices higher. So, it is a decision made by the buying public, you, me, and the rest of our community.
Yeah, and they usually...
...in that area. I also am a member of the Marketing Committee for the City of Fulton, and I'm very confused at the, I'm very concerned because of the conflicting messages we're sending to other businesses and possibly relocations of industries in our area. The Marketing Committee has spent many volunteer hours and dollars focusing on bringing in new business to our area, and it seems that these efforts may be useless if, after we bring the business in, that our business minds close doors instead of open minds. You know, I'm working also, like you, to help maintain our zoning laws and hope they're being used correctly and not because of possible competition in our area, and keeping the community vision alive, trying to dispel any hint of any negative climate towards business that might be considered, that might be considering Fulton in their future business plans for expansion or relocation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a rare opportunity here and speak on my own behalf. I'm Dorian Hanavy. Many of you know me from my professional job as a reporter. Fortunately for me, I no longer cover this area, so I'm allowed to speak as a resident of this area. My views do not represent my publication. I've heard concerns about the neighborhood and it falling down in value. I've heard suggestions that perhaps converting this property into housing for single-family homes will help the neighborhood prosper. I, myself, made a commitment to this community, May twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-two, when I became a resident of Fulton. I do not have the extended history of some of the people in my neighborhood. I would like to continue living here. I would like to see the community grow. I, I'm a tenant. I'm a renter. Some of you may not like that. I've tried to make a positive contribution to this neighborhood. I've tried to deal with it professionally. I think that some of the things this community needs to turn around are more young professionals like myself. Someday, you'll be turning to people like me to help you succeed in life. The failure of economic growth in city, I don't feel, in the city, I don't feel that weighs on my shoulders alone. You take a look at Miller Brewing, you take a look at Owens-Brockway, you look at your own business, Ron Nestle, you're struggling, too. We need businesses to be revitalized. We need businesses who can support themselves. Mr. Marbido, I've heard wonderful things about your store. I've been there a couple times myself. I look out here and I see all the support you have. I don't see that changing. I know that my shopping habits will not change because of him. I know where I want to do my business. If he can give me a hot cup of coffee, I mean, you know, I guess I'm going to have to make it down to your other store. I live, right now, I live at ten and a half North Seventh Street. Prior to that, I lived at seven oh seven Oneida Street. So, I'm right in the neighborhood. I have watched smaller stores try to succeed in the building adjacent to the longer business supply store. I saw a ski shop there, I saw a tobacco shop there. I hated to see them move in and out so quickly. I would like to see that property used productively. I've heard Carol Rutledge explain how she tried to market, what's that, the Wood, the Wood Establishment, is she gone? I'm nervous. Thank you. Copper Beach. I mean, those properties just aren't selling. And like I said, I live in a rental property. Be upfront with you, it's owned by Russ Johnson. I'll put it right on the floor. He's been trying to sell that property for three years now. It's not going anywhere. I don't see how housing is going to grow in that site. I just would like to see something be able to move and prosper there. I don't see how you can penalize this man just because he has a similar business that's already there. That should not be an issue. That is not a legal issue. You need to look at the basics that are in the code, and I would request that you do that.
Thank you.
Got a little worked up, and I wanted to make sure what I, you understand what I came here for. My, it wasn't so much to speak to this issue, is what happened prior to this issue, which was the vote. And I wondered how the governance rules works tonight, if it's a tie vote. We have some questions of legality, whether the mayor can break a tie or not, and I just wondered if, in case of a tie tonight, because obviously, it's a simple zoning issue tonight, whether we change from C-one to C-two because of gas tanks. That's as simple as I can put it. If tonight, you're going to do three-three, and there's all these questions that have been legally asked about some of the laws, Alderman Teramidji had written specifically in the paper about some of the questions about what it was, and Mr. Hawthorne wrote in the paper that it was just a simple language change. Obviously, I'm not sure what it is, and I don't think the public is, so we just want to make sure, since this is an issue of zoning, that this vote tonight that's going to be taken, if it has to be broken by the mayor, is even legal. Can you explain, Mr. Hawthorne, if it's just a language problem, or if it was actually a charter change and it does deserve a referendum? That's my huge concern, because it sort of makes this vote, and I'll invoke it, if that's an illegal vote. Do you understand my concern?
First, Ms. Trobridge, I, if you have a problem with this, I have to turn the tables for a second, ask why you didn't come here when we changed the charter?
Well, I, this isn't confrontational, because I wasn't in town, and I had a very sick grandmother. That's why I wasn't here. But what brought my attention to it, Mr. Hawthorne, is just the letters in the paper, and I did call a couple of aldermen today when I started saying, what's going on here? I'm saying, if this is illegal, then the zoning change in itself tonight would be, could be questioned.
And what, I understand your question, where, you said, I wrote something in the paper? What paper did I write in?
No, it was either I heard on television or on the, just, it was a matter of a word change, or maybe when I talked to Mr. Weston tonight. It was a matter of not changing the charter to change the voting thing, but it was just a matter of clearing up language in the charter.
Okay. I'll answer your question, Kathy.
Sure.
Sorry if I sound confrontational, it's just, the charter as written now, as was changed in, I believe it was November, allows the mayor to vote... changed in, um, I believe it was November, allows the mayor to vote in case of a tie. The charter as written before that change allowed the mayor to vote in case of a tie. I, um, was aware, believe early last week, that there was some question risen as to whether or not that change was subject to mandatory referendum under the municipal home rule law. And I had researched that issue prior to changing it and felt it was not, and I still feel that way. And I wrote what I feel was a precise and detailed letter to the alderman and the mayor last week explaining why I feel that way, and I still feel that way. I don't feel that that change was subject to mandatory referendum and that, um, the mayor can vote if there's a tie.
Well, can I ask a question, John?
Certainly, John.
Why did we advertise for a public hearing to amend the charter? If that be it the case, then it should have went to public referendum. When we advertised for a public hearing, the public hearing notice said, "A local law which amends C-forty of the city charter, which gives the mayor the ability to vote in order to break a tie." Okay, then I have another...
Are you going to let me answer each of these in turn, or are you going to ask all three?
Well, no, I, I'm just reading this information I want to put into the record. Also, there's another resolution here that, that Kathy, uh, the meeting Kathy wasn't at, that, uh, where we did have a public hearing to give the mayor the ability to vote, where two aldermen voted against that. At that time, I didn't think it was right or legal to begin with, and I didn't think it was right to give the power to the mayor when he's the executive branch of government. And then also, uh, here's, um, some information that was sent November twenty-seventh, two thousand, the State Records of Law Bureau in Albany, that says, "I am in closing for your file, Local Law Fourteen and Fifteen of the year two thousand, which was adopted by the City Council of the City of Fulton on November twenty-first, two thousand. Said local law is fully executed as required." And it basically, in here, specifies that the mayor is able to break a tie and, and a vote that, uh, is, is a tie. And, uh, if those things weren't, um, subject to a public hearing, then why does it state in Section Twenty-three of the Municipal Home Rule Law, "Local law is subject to mandatory referendum"? And then you go to, um, B, it says, "In the case of a city, town, or village changes the membership or composition of the legislative body or increases or decreases the number of votes to which any is entitled to cast." And that night, that's what we did. We gave the mayor the ability to break a tie.
No, we didn't. He already had that.
No, he didn't.
Yes, he did.
Well, then why did we, then why did we enact this law?
We'd better defined it, John.
No. That's a stretch, David.
No, it's not a stretch. The pri, I mean, I, this is not something that, that an attorney and a client should argue about in public, John, but our prior code stated that the mayor can vote in case of a tie, except when a majority of the council is required for passage. So he already had the power to vote in case of a tie. So it is not a stretch to say he didn't.
Then, then why do we have a law that says specifically that he can vote and break a tie? I guess that's my question to you.
It already said he could vote and break a tie.
No, it didn't.
Yes, he did.
This, this is a copy of the section of the ordinance that was in effect at the last...
That's the way I read before we changed it.
No, listen, please. "The mayor and aldermen of said city shall constitute the common council thereof."
Right.
Now, that, that makes the mayor a member of the common council.
But it doesn't say you have a vote.
No, listen, please, please, just continue to listen. "At all meetings of the common council, each alderman present shall have one vote."
Right.
"In case of a tie, the mayor shall cast the deciding vote, unless the issue being voted upon is one which requires a majority vote of the entire council for passage." Well, the first sentence says, "I am a member of the council."
I understand.
So if it needs a, a majority vote of the entire council for passage, and there are seven persons on the council, a majority vote is four. Do you still agree with me?
You're the executive branch of government, Your Honor. No matter how you look at it.
I'm not arguing that point, John. I'm arguing, what I'm saying is what...
I don't want to argue with you.
What, no.
I'm just telling you what we passed in the legislation, which is totally different from what you're saying there.
No. All we did...
The why, the why is it so, yeah?
All we did is remove the ambiguous language that says, "Unless the issue being voted upon is one that requires a majority vote of the entire council for passage." That's all we removed. That's the only change that was made to that.
But you...
I had the authority to break a tie before we changed the charter.
Not on zoning issues, Your Honor. Not on zoning issues.
Why not on zoning issues, John?
It's never, ask, ask the former Ryan Woodward. It's never been done.
I'm Sir Woodward.
Is he not the former Woodward?
We amended the charter. That's what we did, giving you the power to vote that night. We did that.
David, do we need, do we need a majority rule from the council to amend the zoning laws? Specifically, the zoning laws? Because this is the issuing question.
It's not the issuing question, but...
Well, it is, because, you know, it's not unless the mayor votes on this tonight.
One-seventy-seven fifty, "After a public hearing and referral to a report by the planning commission, a majority vote of the members of the common council shall be required to amend the zoning ordinance." So the answer is yes.
That's the question that needed to be answered.
So we did.
Right. I understand it now. That's the question I need to know, if the zoning requirements needed, or a supermajority.
No.
That's what I needed to know.
No, just needed a majority of the entire council.
That's right. No, what I had to see is if it was to the zoning.
Yes.
And that's what it was, and I couldn't get a hold of a charter today.
And zoning...
Then that would be okay.
Zoning does require a majority. And the reason...
Not a supermajority.
And the reason that it requires a majority is so that just a quorum, if a quorum was present, you may not get the majority of the council vote.
Right. Correct. Correct. It's clarified now. That's all I needed to know.
As I said, in the organization of the, of the council, in the charter, we did not change the organization. All we did was take out the ambiguous language that said, "Unless the issue being voted upon is one which requires a majority vote of the entire council for passage."
Right.
If the mayor is a member of the council...
Right.
Then it requires a majority vote of the entire council.
Correct.
Is four members.
That's all I came for, is clarification. I really...
And just for, for one more further...
Because I couldn't get an answer if it was the zoning. Some of them needed more than one-plus-a-majority. There was many tricky things in our charter.
Assessments, assessments require a majority. And just for further clarification, Kathy, and I, you know, I hate to get into this issue too much for people that, especially an issue that may not be relevant tonight, unless everybody knows something I don't know about how the votes are going to go, but... Also, the reason that this came up was because we were in litigation, as everybody knows, over this particular issue, and in that litigation, there was a difference, difference of opinion. In fact, the petitioners were arguing that the mayor should have voted that night because the language is "shall" in case of a tie. It was our opinion based on that ambiguous language that he couldn't vote that night.
Right.
And again, because there was litigation and there was, there were arguments both sides, which, which issue was not resolved in court, because the only one issue was resolved by the court, and that's why we're back here tonight, and that was the notice deficiency. Because of that litigation, we felt that there was an ambiguity in the charter that we had to fix, and that's why we...
Which we've seen many, and I really only came here for clarification, because I wasn't sure if we put in the cart before the horse. And I've been through the charter, where you have to make any change for one change, and I couldn't get a hold of a charter. That's the only thing I, thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
If you have questions in the future, please give me a call.
I did call two aldermen today. I just didn't get a chance. It was like, all of a sudden, all these questions, people started talking, and that's all. Thank you.
I will try to answer any questions that you have.
Appreciate it.
Is, is there, is there anyone else that has, would like to speak on the zone change There's no one else from the public that would care to speak on this? Is there anyone on the council that would care to speak on this?
Um, of course. Of course. Um, obvious, obviously, we have had a very difficult issue that we have to deal with, as evidenced by the divided council. We certainly have heard from everyone tonight, some more than once. I think it was an excellent public hearing. I know myself, and I think all the aldermen, we've had sufficient time to investigate and explore, ask questions. We received letters, received phone calls, conversations, to help us to make what we consider is the best decision. So prior to the meeting, um, over the last few weeks, I did put down some thoughts, some questions, and I'd like to share those with the council now and the public. The questions that I asked myself was, "What is the best use of the property? What is the criteria that the council should consider? And what is in the best possible interest of the public?" Some of these things have already come up tonight, and it'll be repetitive. The property is owned commercial and is operated for such for over seventy years. The property has been up for sale for close to three years. I was asked by a concerned neighbor as to why not turn the property into residential housing. And as Carol Rutledge mentioned, she mentioned Copper Beach Commons that was built in nineteen ninety-four with eight units of buyer-assisted housing, of which the last unit was finally sold last year. In addition, there has been very few new housing, um, excuse me, housing starts in the last few years. Property contains five vacant buildings, which, if left in their present condition, will continue to be a safety concern. The city will be forced to take over for back taxes and demolish a taxpayer expense. Then you are left with a large vacant lawn. It would be nice if, as a city, we could have the luxury of picking and choosing as to what goes here and there. Developers are driven by demand and opportunities to successfully operate, whether they are builders or business people. Market research is extensively done to determine the best locations for their needs. It would be nice if we could fill vacant buildings and vacant properties before new buildings are built, but that's not reality. With a new business on Oneida Street, it would become an improvement to the area from an appearance standpoint and provide property and sales tax. I talked to city assessor Diane Moore, and I asked her if the development would have an adverse effect on property values. In her opinion, it would not, and if anything, it would be positive, as opposed to vacant buildings, or at the least, it would remain the same. The criteria that the council should be considering is what is in the public's best interest. I was contacted by phone and in person by a concerned neighbor who lives a block away. I was contacted by phone by another neighbor whose property is behind the Collins property. I was contacted in person by a businessperson who believes that the business would be affected by another store coming into the area. I was contacted by letter by a person whose property is behind the Collins property. I was contacted by a letter by a supplier whose business could decline if a competitive store was to locate in the neighborhood. I was contacted by a resident who was concerned that the vacant buildings are a safety hazard and feared that a fire would impact surrounding homes. It is my understanding from talking to the city attorney and by his letter to the council on September twenty-eighth, that the legal standard we needed to follow is whether the request would be in the interest of the health, safety, or welfare of the, of the community. So based on that consideration, I am supporting the zone change.
Okay, may I just ask you? I want to thank all of you for being here and expressing all of your opinions, whether they were negative or positive. All of us sitting at the council table here gave hard thought and consideration on this issue. Expression of opinions is one element this country was built on, the right to express opinions. Whether these opinions are negative or positive, we must respect those individuals. As I said, this country was built on those elements. Competition cannot legally be shut out, cannot single out the benefit of a single or multiple owners of any business. I hear that this would decrease valuation of the surrounding area. This, I believe, did not happen in the area of Wilson Farm on West Broadway. Nor this did not happen with the addition of a, of gas pumps at Striplers. I serve on the marketing committee for the Chamber of Commerce, which one direction is to seek and promote business, et cetera, in our city. We must try to work into the future. The Collins property, as it stands, is a non-working property. Can the city afford more vacant buildings and the cost of demolition? We already have vacant buildings and property that people are not rushing in to buy, build, or renovate. Wilson Farms will add to the tax roll and clean up that area. This, I believe, is in the best general interest and the welfare of the city and the majority of taxpayers. I thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, um, I, after the first public hearing, I had gone, or before the first public hearing, I had gone over and solicited people's comments in that area, and, um, I felt that the people over there, they were telling me that they, they did not want this in that neighborhood. They wanted to bring it back to a residential-type neighborhood, and under the Don Bullard administration, that was something that we made a commit to, bringing neighborhoods back to being neighborhoods. And I'm very strongly, um, opposed to the zone change, only for the fact that it's going to, um, change the aspect of that neighborhood in a negative way for the people who live there, who have to reside there, will be. So I'm, I'm opposed to this whole change.
Thank you.
Officer Sherman?
A lot of the things I was going to say have already been said, so I'm not going to go back over them, but I'd like to say to the council that, first of all, you are elected as leaders, and sometimes, as a leader, you've got to make very difficult decisions. And with that said, too, that, obviously, this is going to be a very difficult decision, because you've got people on both sides of the aisle that are in favor or opposed. You know, you've got your list as to who's opposing it. A lot of the neighbors around that particular area are against it. I have never, I, my position on this type of zoning issue in the city has remained constant. Uh, I did talk to Alderman Woodward about it, saying that I would never vote for something in his backyard that I would not vote for in my backyard. And I have done that with the George Valet property. Uh, we're going to have an auto-zone there now, because he has sold the property, and it is in my backyard. I am not wishing this on any of those neighbors down there, but it does come down to a dollar and cents. The city is a business. We have to make business decisions. We are the leaders of that business, and we have to base it on those facts. And the problem here is that, do we want to acquire this property, throw back taxes, tear that thing down? And I, as a taxpayer, personally, I don't want to pay for that. I don't want to pay for it, and I don't expect my neighbor to have to pay for it. Okay? So that's really, it really comes down to that, and the government should never, again, I didn't want to cover what other people have said, but government is not up here to make decisions who's going to be competitive and who's not going to be competitive. For all we know, Marbido's may not be there in five years anyway, through his own, he may retire. When, when Mr. Marbido retires, who's going to run that store? We don't know. And then you're going to have another empty building down there, not through the law, not through competition, but just through the mere fact that somebody has retired. Marbido, at one time, did have a monopoly in the city. They had three stores. Okay? And it's really, it wasn't Fulton's community, it wasn't the leadership to determine who's going to compete and who wasn't going to compete. And it really comes down to making a difficult decision. I am not going to vote against people tonight, but I am going to vote for what they're going to pay for, and what they're not going to pay for. They are not going to pay for tearing that building down if it's up to me. It's that simple. And they are not going to be subjected to a building that's going to have a roof fall in in another year when the ice builds up on it. They're not going to pay for that type of situation. I'm not going to put that neighborhood through any more tax devaluation because of a building that's in decline. I think we have a responsibility. We have a very difficult decision to make tonight, and we have to make it. This is not a vote against Alderman Woodward's work, it is not a vote against Alderman Lincoln and his efforts that he has committed. It is a vote for... It is a vote for the community. Okay? It is, I look at it right now, this is an opportunity to get some green space in that neighborhood down there. You've got Blacktop. You've got a building with glass front on it that's an eyesore. Okay? Here's an opportunity to get a brand-new building in that neighborhood. I don't want, and the idea that they're going to have a lot of walk-ins and this and that, why would they want to have gas pumps there if they're going to cater to just a walk-in market? If that's what they wanted to do, if they're just going to cater to a walk-in market, they could say, scrap the gas pumps and build a thing there anyway. So I think that it's obvious, they're looking to service the community. And I'm not, again, I don't want to, I don't want people to think I'm being abrasive up here. I just feel that it's the best situation for the city. I'm not voting against people. I'm voting in favor of what is best for the taxpayer in this city. That's what it comes down to. Thank you.
Alderman Thompson?
Yeah, I got a couple of things to say this time around. I didn't, just took a couple of notes based on what I heard. And first of all, I do think that free enterprise is a good thing. If anybody knows what I do for a living, I make my money off of free enterprise. And it's good when the market goes up, it's bad when the market goes down. Hold is a great company. My company actually has an outperform rating. We think your stock's going up, but I don't think I'm here to pass on whether or not you're a good company. I heard a couple of people talk about the marketing committee that the city has. I am one of the two aldermen that's on the marketing committee. And tonight, there seems to be a big focus on bringing in business. But a bigger question that I have is, what is business? Is business a company with a good-paying job where somebody can support their family? Or is it a corner store with a dozen high school girls making six bucks an hour? I don't mean that to be sexist or nothing.
Or bag boys.
Or bag boys. That's, I meant that, too. I think that one of the focuses of that committee should be to replace jobs that were lost at Miller Brewing and at Owens Illinois with real jobs, and not replace an $18-an-hour job that somebody's been at for 10, 15, 20 years with another gas station, another dollar store, another fast-food place, the same slew of new business coming to Fulton that we've had for the last five or 10 years. I do believe that I was elected to voice the concerns of the people that I represent and to help bring forth their vision of what direction this city should be going through. And one way that we can help control that and go in that direction is through zoning. That's why God invented zoning laws. I understand some of the current concerns that people have about maybe being open late at night. I live right behind Tom Marbeto's store, and I love Tom to death, but I don't like all the riffraff that walks past my house at quarter at nine at night. And if you want to see, like Ron told me earlier, if you want to see what Wilson Farms is going to look like at quarter or 12, come to my house at quarter at nine. It's going to look probably pretty close. And I did count how many people came here tonight. I did count how many people spoke in favor and against, and the noes win. So I'm going to be voting no. Thank you.
Yeah. I think just about everything's been said, Your Honor. The only thing I'm going to say is, I still have faith that we can bring the neighborhoods back. I think that government had a big hand, and I've been part of government for a lot of years, and we make mistakes. I think we've been a big hand in the detriment of the neighborhoods. It didn't happen overnight. It certainly didn't happen in this administration, or mine, or Don Bullard's, or Vern Groen's, or Merrill Eller's. But I think over the years, we all had a hand in it. And for all the right reasons, it turned wrong. Usually, they involve the quick buck. I still would like to see the neighborhood go back to a neighborhood, and I don't think that I'm going to be around long enough to see what I would like it to be, but I have children, live in the city, and have grandchildren, and maybe someday, it will be a little nicer, and we won't be having this conversation, so I don't support it. And I respect the people, you know, and how they feel. Thank you.
I have anguished over this decision for a couple of months now, and it's not easy. I can understand the concerns of some of the neighbors. This is a new, unknown. Everybody is afraid of the unknown. But we have talked, this administration has talked for three years now, of supporting economic growth in the city. And what kind of message are we sending to prospective developers if we do not work with them? The only way we are going to get businesses to come into this city is to work with the businesses, because they are going to tell us where they want to be. And if we cannot provide that place for them, they are not going to locate in this city. The only zoning that we're looking at here, the only thing that we're voting on tonight is the gas pump issue. If it wasn't, no, if it wasn't for the gas pump, they could be, the store could be built already. That is the point. The store can go there. So the argument about competition for Mr. Marbeto is a mute issue. It doesn't exist.
You just said, because they want their business there, and because they won't want their business there unless you change the zoning.
They.
There's no sense having zoning laws.
That's.
The business has always been a common sense.
Because this is commercial. If they were going to go into a residential area, an area that is zoned, completely residential, I would be entirely against this. Just listen. Just listen to me, please. Where do you live?
615 U. Street.
Okay. Is that a residential area?
Who's the name?
Is it a residential area? Is it owned residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for a girl, there's a bathroom.
That is another situation. And I understand your concern. I understand your concern. No. Choices have to be made, and these are not easy choices. Not at all. Not for any of these people sitting up here. This is very difficult. In the three years that I've been here, this is the most difficult situation I've had to deal with.
But you couldn't wait to jump into it, because.
No, because I thought there was something wrong with the charter. I thought that I should have the chance the first time, to be honest with you.
And if you're a citizen of business, you're a hard business. Well, then it's a business that doesn't need a general, a key vote in the city, because there's a whole lot of those taxpayers that are going to say, why should we support this business anymore? Why should we help stop the business company?
And that's right. And I understand this. And if you can find another place that is better, I think, I think that you need, that's right. Okay, but that's what we're talking about. If you're looking to go back to residential for that area, think about it. Where are people building new homes today? Are they building them in close-packed neighborhoods? No. They want homes. If they're going to invest $100,000 to $150,000 in a home, they want a large yard, they want trees. And all you got to do is go over and look on the west side, over there at the Patrick tract over there.
Tannery Lane.
Tannery Lane, and you will see that. The houses are separated, there are wooded lots. If you go out into Valley, just off Old Maple Avenue, in the Rowley complex over there, are the houses on top of one another? No, they are not.
So you think more of a ghetto?
No, it's not going to be a ghetto. Them going in there is going to improve that area with, from what it is right now. We've got people, I've got real estate people that have already lost some business potential customers over what happened at the last vote.
I think it would be kind of naive to think that there's a whole bunch of CEOs sitting around looking through the FultonDailyNews.com saying.
We don't know how many we've lost, but there's been at least one that has talked to a realtor that said, if that's the attitude they have, I don't want to be here.
Pardon interruption.
Can I say something?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just, I'm trying to keep up on my notes. Has a public hearing been closed yet?
No, no. I'm just making comments, and I will close a public hearing, or the council will.
Should these people, Your Honor, be penalized because they don't live or are building a house in a, in a, in a Tannery Lane?
No, no, not at all. Not at all.
But that's what.
Now, just listen a minute. Listen to me, please. Right now, with the zoning that is there, if Mr. Collins could find somebody that wanted to open a bar there, it would be there, and you couldn't stop it.
That's right. You can't stop this.
No. No. Would a bar be better than Wilson Farm?
Maybe.
For that community? What I have to do, in my position, as I feel, is I have to look out for the overall good of the city. Are some people going to be not happy with this? Definitely. Definitely.
All the people that live down there, just about?
Well, I think that if this does transpire, that the Wilson Farms people will work with the neighbors to make this just as easy as possible, because it is the unknown.
I understand that, Your Honor, but let me tell you something. The site plan review and all the stuff that happens, okay? How long have we been waiting for Mr. Natoli to do what he said he was going to do originally when he started that complex over there where KBC used to be? Okay?
I don't know.
So site plan doesn't work all that great. It's a nice idea, but it's not implemented properly, and it's not enforced properly.
That's right. So we have to enforce it.
We've, we've installed a mechanism for my suggestions to the planning board, John, that they're going to start requiring performance bonds for green space issues and dumpster screening issues, so another, so that what happened over there is not going to happen again.
We cannot afford to have our tax base erode anymore. We have too much non-taxable property in the city right now. We don't need any more of it. We have to support economic growth and business if we are going to move forward. As I said, I am very sensitive to quality-of-life improvements, but I have to look at quality of life for the entire city, not one specific area. And from what I've seen tonight, Mr. Marbeto, I don't feel that your customers are going to desert you to go to this new store if it is placed there. I really don't see that happening. Because they did a study that says it'll work there. They put the money into a study. We didn't make the study. Well, it's going to be, apparently, they, apparently, they do.
As I said before, put yourself in shoes and behave.
Look.
Do you want a gas station in your backyard?
Do I want one? No. No, I don't want one. Would I accept one if it's for the betterment of the city? Yes, sir, I would.
I like your non-government.
I would not like it, but I would accept it, sir.
People don't want to be.
I understand this.
So don't make them take it.
Is that the best interest of the entire city, sir?
I think so.
I don't.
I think so.
I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Bringing residential areas back.
Two rather stable.
Yeah. Right. Bringing residential neighborhoods should be our top priority, Your Honor.
We can, we can correct residential areas, just the way you talked, by converting multifamilies back to single families. You're not going to get people to build in the existing neighborhoods. It's not going to happen. It's a pipe dream. You heard that tonight. Let's, let's, let's get real about this. It's not going to happen. Now, please.
Put yourself in those people's position. That's all I got to say, Your Honor.
That's what I have been doing for the last two months.
I don't think so. Or else, or else you would, or else you would say, hey.
Then, sir, then, sir, you are questioning my integrity, and I'm not going to put up with that. I will entertain a motion to close this hearing. Move it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Could you read the motion? The next motion, please.
Whereas the mayor, members of the council, and all in attendance have been given an opportunity to give their written or oral comments regarding said proposed zone change requests. Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed zone change from C1 commercial, C2 commercial for the property located on the southwest corner of Anita, South 7th Street for the purpose of constructing at Wilson Farms is hereby approved.
Take a roll call. Roll call vote.
Alderman Lincoln?
Uh, no.
Alderman Sahaski?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Sherman?
Yes.
Alderman Thompson?
Uh, no, and I have a question. Shouldn't there be, somebody move that resolution before you take the vote?
Probably not a bad idea.
Do we need a motion in a second before we can vote?
I'll move it.
Motion?
Move it.
Second? Go through the vote game, please.
Alderman Lincoln?
No.
Alderman Sahaski?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Sherman?
Yes.
Alderman Thompson?
Thank you, no.
Alderman Woodward?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Your Honor, make a motion, Major Jim.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Opposed adjourned.
Did a great job.
Opposed adjourned.
I got a little hot earlier.
Well, you should have gone out. You didn't want to miss that.